I'm gonna call the May meeting of the Board of Education into session. The reason I'm calling the meeting to order is we reorganized after the month of April elections. We do that each and every year. The first order of business is for us to appoint a...
Actually, before we go any further, let's do the...
Pledge of the agenda.
Yes. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I guess it didn't even look now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we can reorganize. The first order of business in reorganization is to appoint a teller. So do I have a motion to appoint a teller? A secretary, in essence.
I move Becky.
Okay, Keith, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Dale. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, Becky is the teller. The next order of business is to appoint a president. Do we have a motion for a president?
I move to, for Keith Anderson, for president.
Okay, Shar as a first. Do we have a second?
Second that.
Second from Erin. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, do we have any other nominations for president? I have to do this three times. Any other nominations for president? Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, Keith is president, and I'll pass the baton on to Keith for the rest of the proceeding.
I want to thank everyone for the support.
For confidence.
Yes. I feel like I was in the line. Everybody will step back though sometimes.
Can you jump right up there?
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll move on to vice president. Do we have any nominations for vice president?
I would nominate Shar Glenna for the position of vice president.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Or is there any other nominations for Shar, for vice president?
There you go.
Well, can I ask Dale, are you interested as the other?
You just nominate him.
Oh. Then he answers.
I'm interested in having Shar as the vice president.
As a longstanding member of this board, I guess I'm wondering if you're interested.
I think Shar would be a good candidate for vice president, so.
Thanks, Keith.
All right, then I will second that motion.
Is there any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations for vice president? All those in favor of Shar Glenna as vice president, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay. Then we gotta go to clerk. Are there any nominations for clerk?
I nominate Dale.
Dale?
Dale's a good faithful client.
I have a good signature.
I guess so.
I'll second that now.
Erin, are there any other nominations for clerk? Are there any other nominations for clerk? Hearing none? All those in favor of Dale Johnson as our clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go, Dale. And then we have treasurer. Are there any nominations for treasurer?
I'll nominate Erin Hosking.
Okay, Erin?
Sure.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Joe? Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer?
I move to call nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Erin Hosking as president.
All those in favor of Erin as treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, we got the board organized. Dale, you're, or Joe, you're the director. All right.
Okay.
I was wondering what was next.
And now we will look at the meeting dates for our 22, 23...
Same on the screen. June's on there twice. June's always the last Monday in the month, so the next time we see each other here is six weeks out, June 27th, and then the dates are basically a push forward from what we did this year. And that runs us all the way out to the last Monday in June of 2023. So those are the dates.
All right. Anybody have a conflict or anything they'd like to add or change to that?
Packer game on Monday, December 19th.
We'll wrap that one up quick.
Maybe a five o'clock meeting.
I don't think they're going that far this year.
Tom's checking the Vikings' schedule. They didn't get any fun.
Yeah, he's getting it out.
Tom already knows he's gonna be sick.
You can just watch the Packers with Josh.
Did the Vikings get any Monday game?
I don't know. No one cares.
That's what I mean, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, then, can we have a motion to accept those meeting dates?
I motion.
Joe, a second?
Second.
Shar, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? There we go. Now we have our designation of our depositories. So these are our financial institutions that we deal with.
That is correct.
And that's nothing...
Nothing's changed. Those have been for quite some time.
Yeah, nothing changed. The WISC or W-I-A-C there is who goes PMA for the referendum money, so there's no addition to anyone else with that, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the official depositaries.
Okay, second, Shar. All in favor, say aye.
I'd like some discussion.
What's that? Oh, do you want? Yep, I'm sorry.
I'd like some discussion. Could you go over what, what funds are with which, what bank? That is yet to be determined, as we have not sold the bonds yet, so come, and you probably can ask more questions of Lisa when she comes over later with that. She'd have a better idea.
Are you talking in a general sense or referendum?
Not referendum. Not referendum?
Okay.
Oh, sure, sorry about that. I was confused a little bit. Bremmer and Wisconsin Credit Union is the two that we have funds with, so. Okay.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have the appointment of our WASBA and CISA 11 delegate.
Well, that has, the WASB in the past has been Erin and Chelsea, and CISA 11 has been Erin. I'm not sure what Erin's interest level is in that capacity, but she has been involved, and certainly anyone else can. You can arm wrestle Erin for the CISA job if you want.
Yes, the CISA 11 annual meeting is on Monday, June 6th. Does that sound right? Is that a Monday?
6th is a Monday.
And I'm on the CISA Board of Control also, so I already have to be there that evening, so I would be happy to go and be our representative for the annual meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. And what about WASBA representative?
Well, we don't have to know this evening. It would be great if we did, but Erin can serve in that capacity. We don't have to have more than one.
And that would be the annual meeting at the district convention in January?
Yep.
Yeah, which I've done the last few years, but if anybody else would like to serve in that role, if anybody else would like to have that opportunity, sitting in a several hours long meeting, listening to...
Policies.
Yes, discussion on resolutions, yep.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting. You learn some stuff.
I take that as a yes, then.
But if anybody else wants to take a turn.
Motion for Erin to be our WASBA CISA 11? Dale?
Yes, I would make that motion.
Oh, I thought you were jumping in to be the delegate.
No, I was just gonna ask.
I'll second. All right. Go ahead.
Well, I guess the advisory committees that we have here, I was just gonna say, I mean, Joe's not on any of these right now, but...
We got E, let's do E, and then we'll get the...
But top, that's the next meeting.
Yep, I'm getting to that one.
Whoa, okay, wow. All right.
That's why you're clerk.
That's why I'm clerk.
So, a motion is made. Dale and Joe, second by Joe for appointment of Erin for WASBA and CISA 11. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, now we have the authorization for use of the independent hearing officers.
Typically, we've used Weld Riley as our independent hearing expulsion officer person or firm, and Steve Weld himself usually comes. We don't have to have an independent person, but we have to make sure the process is authentic and legal. We haven't gone to expulsion very often, which is a good thing, but we've typically used Weld Riley, and they have since the day I've been here, which is 16 years at least.
Is there a motion for Weld Riley to be our hearing officer?
Yes, I will make that motion.
Dale, a second?
Second.
Shar, anything else?
Have we looked anywhere else for, or put out bids, or...
We haven't. We've simply been working with Weld Riley for quite some time. We certainly can, if that's all of you want to do. I can only speak to my experiences, and it's a very high-quality process, well-organized. I've been on this seat with expulsion, and I've been in Josh's seat as an expulsion person presenting information. It's a very well-run process, and Steve Weld's got 30-plus years of experience doing it, sadly enough, in a lot of places. That would be my recommendation, but we can certainly put out the bid. It would be, I think, complicated for them to be, not be our independent hearing officer, but yet be our law firm that we use for other things. But anything can be done, just a matter of what you want me to do.
I'll, I'll motion that.
It's already a motion. Dale and Shar?
Sorry.
Yep, so, nothing else? All those in favor?
I would just say that we, I get, four of us have worked with them, and it was well-run. Is it, does it have to be somebody in the legal realm that does that?
It's best if you do that. And here's the information that I can bring to bear on this situation that probably is the most relevant. The quickest way for an expulsion hearing to go awry and for you not to be able to have an appropriate outcome, whether that's to expel or not to expel a kid, is to not follow the statutory guidelines in regards to the process. And I can say for certain that Steve Weld and Weld Riley have that down pat in regards to procedural items. Everything that we do from a correspondence standpoint, they bet every single word. And to do that independently would be dangerous. Do it with someone else is certainly possible, but I just simply know the work that Weld Riley has done has been high-quality in that regard.
Did you have something, like some other entity in mind, or some other...
No, I, I think, President, we can call the board.
Okay. Hopefully, we never use them.
Right.
All right, all those in favor of Weld Riley as being our independent hearing officer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? There we go. Now we'll go to our appointed committees. So these are all flex...
These are not locked in by any means. Anyone that wants to weigh in can certainly do so, opt in or opt off. We simply can't have more than two of you in one particular area, because that becomes a quorum of the board. We have building and grounds, which has really evolved into referendum, and that has spiraled into something much bigger. But the point people have been myself, Keith, Ryan, and George. Community ed, I'm not sure if you want me to take these one by one and weigh in or go through them. I don't mean to read all the names to you, you can see them for yourself. I guess I'll ask you, is there something that jumps out at you?
Could. Both you are on here twice, do you need help?
Like on our, on our committees?
Yeah, would you like me to help you by taking one or the other?
The other thing is that, Keith, you're now on every committee as the president, correct?
Yep.
So we should have somebody else probably on the buildings and grounds committee? Is that right?
Yep.
Or we don't necessarily need a second person?
Up to you guys.
Okay.
Yep.
So, but if you're interested in taking even either information technology or outdoor ed, that would be fine also.
I didn't hear you, Joe, so you want on building and grounds?
Correct, I'd like to be on building and grounds.
I just wanted to make sure Becky could hear you.
I can, great. Great addition.
There's plenty to talk about right now, I can tell you that much. Other items that you see that you want to weigh in on?
These are just our standing committees, I guess, I'd like to point out.
Yep, they are.
We have other committees that come, ad hoc committees that come through the year or two years, so then there's also opportunities for those committees as well, but this building and grounds committee will keep you busy in a lot of meetings. Generally, like our human growth and development committee and the curriculum oversight committee have always met right after school, so like during the, like the day until like 3:30. I hope that would work with your schedule.
And not as often, human growth and development. What's the cycle on that, Tom and Jessica? Two or three years, isn't it?
I'm gonna say, was it every three?
I think you have to meet every three years, but we meet more often than that, but...
And curriculum is every year when we go...
Yes, curriculum is every year.
For purchases. But it certainly can't, if you're interested in one of those, you certainly can step on.
Yep.
And don't feel that this is locked in for the rest of this year. If a change needs to be made, we just make a change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would like to learn more about curriculum, but...
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I'll, I can step off of the curriculum committee.
Okay.
We can add Joe on that.
Good work.
Anything else? With that being said, a motion to accept those appointed advisory committee changes?
I motion.
Joe?
I'll second.
Aye. He gets it. Erin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? There we go.
We're all on.
I know.
Everybody's got their egg in.
That's what I was.
Must be cupcakes afterwards, huh?
Not for everybody.
And before.
All right. Ah, consent agenda items.
Oh, I had the consent agenda items for this month. I went in and looked over the vouchers, and everything was in order. I appreciated seeing the purchases for the, the ovens, the combi ovens, and the skillets and things like that. Glad to see that those have been ordered and as we approved those a couple of months ago. So I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
And a second?
Second.
Shar?
We're all right there.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll get a schedule for the months that we do our consent agenda items, and so I'll try and be there with you in the first month, because I don't know which one it is, but hopefully it ain't June.
I haven't put it together yet.
Okay, but don't make it June.
Okay. But if somebody else needs to go in, you know?
What's that?
If somebody else needs to go in with them and show them how.
Yeah, I'm just saying it.
Yep.
Yeah, Keith is not a good teacher. He taught me how to go through those and do that.
One at a time. All right. Community comments, do we have anyone sign up?
George, can you speak out there with the clipboards?
Okay. Now we'll go to our administrative reports.
Okay, Josh, you're up.
All right, past month at the high school. First thing I want to highlight is on April 21st, we had our warrior time, senior exit presentation by our outgoing seniors and their little warrior time families. And I know they put a lot of nice pictures out there on social media, but I had a lot of underclassmen that came up and talked to me about how it was really cool to see the people that they look up for, or look up to in their classrooms, tell their story about where they were going, and that was exactly what we wanted out of it. For the older kids to demonstrate the path to graduation and the steps they took and to tell their story. So it was really a great day. We've had some other great things going on. We had fine arts night, April 25th. I saw many of you there, so I know you saw our, our kids, the performers, the artists. Always amazing what they put forth. April 27th, we finished up our 10th grade state testing on the forward test. We had two social studies tests that day to wrap things up. April 30th, had a wonderful day with prom. The kids danced their hearts out. May 4th, we sent a number of our 10th graders to the Polk County Career Day up at the Polk County Fairgrounds. Lots of really great opportunities. The chaperones that came back and talked to me said our kids were all in. They were exploring all their opportunities, and I know they love playing around with some of the heavy machinery too, so even the girls. May 7th, we sent a bunch of kids down to state solo and ensemble music contest down at Eau Claire. They were wonderful, as always. This past Wednesday night, we had our senior awards night, and for those of you that were around that, we, we gave out over $270,000. Now, some of that was from some big national scholarships, but there was still over $150,000 of local money. That's pretty impressive, quite the community. Wrapped up two weeks of AP testing, and a lot of kids were pulling their hair out by the end of it. It's a stressful two weeks and a lot of studying, and that's done and over, and there's always a lot of smiles, and now they'll wait a month to find out how they did on that. Future events, tomorrow's our last day of student course scheduling for next school year. I had a couple of students, of course, that didn't get their dream scheduled, but as I remind, a lot of people, we're a small school that tries to act like a big school when it comes to, in terms of what we try to offer, and we do the best we can, but, you know, for a school our size, we, we have a lot of, a lot of options for kids, a lot of things to be proud of. On Wednesday, we're taking the senior class to Interstate Park for their annual senior class trip. Last day for seniors will be on Friday. We've got graduation practice in the morning. The annual senior walk will start about 9:45. They'll do their senior video and senior silly wards at about 10:30, and I'll be kicking them all out of the building by 11 o'clock that morning and on their way. So they've been a great crew. Graduation will be Sunday, May 22nd, at 2:00. All are welcome, no tickets required, open to the public. We also will be doing a live stream too, so anybody that just prefers to watch it from the comfort of their home, they certainly can do that. We're starting to get into playoff season for WIE sports. Tomorrow night, we've got the conference track and field championships in Baldwin. We've got golf conferences also tomorrow, I think. Tennis will be on Wednesday, so we're there. And then last day of school, of course, Friday, June 3rd. Any questions from you guys? Thank you.
All right, at the middle school, we've had some fun events too. Our 7th grade just completed last week their civics field trip. It's kind of an annual trip where they go up to the Polk County. They look at the Polk County courthouse. They actually sit in and watch parts of a hearing that they're allowed to see. They visit the county jail and, you know, just some of the other county institutions. And then also, they take a look at local city government, and they take a look at the facilities that we have here and talk and meet with different people. And then we throw in a visit to the Polk County Museum, since they're up there, and I'm amazed at how many kids have never been in, in that museum. And if you haven't been recently, it's pretty neat. They've done a nice job up there. Last Friday, we just finished our Genius Hour Expo. It's pretty exciting. We had 300 students all presenting, some of them in teams, a passion project that they've been working on. And then parents and community members were able to come in and, and ask questions and learn what the kids were working on. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there because I had my own son's graduation, so I felt bad about that, but it was exciting to have a really great day. Some upcoming events, we have the Memorial Day Parade coming up, and our middle school cadet band will be marching as they always do in that annual Memorial Day Parade and be part of the Memorial Day service down at the, down at the Gravesdale site too, and working with the American Legion and the, and all of the different individuals that run that event. It's always been a really great event. Our 6th grade is taking a field trip to the Pioneer Village on May 19th, and that's another trip where they go out and they get to take a look at what life was like many, many years ago and how things have changed, and they get to see and interact, and that's kind of a fun trip. Again, looking forward to the last day of school, June 3rd. We kick up summer school on June 13th, and we have a lot of kids signed up for some elective and fun, interesting classes, but also summer remedial classes and working on skills that they need to improve on. And so Laura Shogren's done a really nice job running that for many years now. And then we have some fun parades coming up too. We have the Clayton Parade on June 18th and the Clear Lake Parade on June 25th.
Good evening. Lots of exciting things at the Intermediate School. On May 9th, we completed our walk-a-thon at the track. It was a great fundraiser. The funds are going to build a Gaga ball pit. Josh Gengie and his high school students are building that for us, and the hope is to put that up by the end of the school year. We completed fast bridge benchmarking last week. I want to thank the IPO for their generous gift cards during Staff Appreciation Week. They also set up a school-friendly beverage bar for the day that was enjoyed by our teachers. Field trips and concerts that have taken place over the last several weeks. Some highlights, our 3rd grade visited Crystal Cave, and 5th grade had a fantastic music and band concert that also included recorders. The Amory Women's Club presented here at the Intermediate School Earth Day programs by grade level. They listened to a book that was read aloud to them and then had some activities, so I want to thank the Women's Club for that. The Curriculum Oversight Committee meeting, we met on May 4th as a committee and reviewed the ELA curriculum decision, and it was approved. I'll present on that in just a little bit. The kinship program had their end-of-the-year party on May 2nd. I want to thank Polk County Kinship, the high school kinship mentors that walk over each day, and also Amory Danielson for the support of our students. Amory Area EMS visited the Intermediate School and presented on safety to our 4th and 5th grade students. They received a safety book and have the opportunity to write in an essay to win an iPad through state safety program, so thank you to our EMS workers as well. We have lots of upcoming events. I'll just highlight a few of them. The 23rd, we have 2nd grade students walking over to tour the Intermediate School and meet our teachers and, and see the beautiful building that we have. May 24th, AM has their showcase and musical at the high school auditorium. May 25th and 26th, we have our 5th grade Wapo trip. May 31st is our track and field day. June 1st, our Title I spring parent meeting at the elementary school library. June 2nd is IPO Fun Day and Awards Day, and finally, June 3rd is our student cookout, last day of school, and then AM will take a field trip to Polk County Museum and Ice Age Trail.
Okay, news from the elementary school, busy time of year. I want to begin by thanking Ryan Pease, Jeremy Castleberry, and Derek Meyer for their orchestrating the renovation of our school garden. It really needed a lot of help and support, and they took it on along with, how many kids? Did you have 40?
No, three or four.
Oh, three or four. I thought it started out as 40.
Just three of our class, and then...
Oh, okay.
And then planted Christmas trees and other things, so they...
Okay.
Spread out a lot.
Derek always spreads his kids out, right? So we're just happy that we had some of them to help us with our school garden. We also planted some new fruit trees in our garden too, so we're excited about that. Our, we're always looking for ways to promote reading with our children, and thanks to our amazing Ms. Annie Brayton, who I think is here tonight. She plans an Art Varchs Club, and it's a tradition at, for our 2nd graders with the purpose of encouraging and supporting our readers. And this current group of 2nd grade students broke the all-time record. As of today, I believe we have over 2,063 books that have been read, so it really, really encourages our readers, which is, is very fun. So thank you to Annie and to Jessica, her support in helping us with our Art Varch Club. We also had a staff appreciation day that was sponsored by our amazing Parents as Partners Group. Group. They provided a delicious lunch and all of the staff, people in our entire building, staff and custodians, clubhouse, everybody received this delicious lunch and a gift card from downtown, one of the boutiques downtown. We are going on a field trip to the public library. It started today. Our kids are going down. They're getting to see the brand-new library and experience that, so we're excited to be able to expose them to that. They're also learning about the summer reading program that is, that we are working in collaboration with the public library, and we're excited about that as well. Lisa Benson leads our PBIS Tier One Committee, and one of our goals this year, and it began last year, was to expose our children to a variety of cultures. And this year, we learned about Asian Pacific Americans, Hispanic culture, the Black History Month, and Native Americans, all with the purpose of, we believe that learning about other cultures helps us all understand different perspectives within our world. The students are excited about it. We get, we have guest speakers occasionally, and a lot of artifacts and hangings in our highways. And our specialists, art, music, and FIAD always do a collaborative activity to teach about the different culture that we're learning about. So, this currently, we're looking at Asia, we are learning about Asian Pacific Americans. We are in the process of our twenty-two, twenty-three class placements. We work very hard. We bring a lot of staff together. Different people know different things about our children, so we include our specialists, our guidance counselors, principal, teachers, and with the goal of creating a heterogeneous environment for our children. And that's taking place right now, and it's very exciting, but a little stressful because we all want to place kids in the best place for them. Jess, did you, did you mention the senior walk coming up this Friday? You did. Okay, I wasn't listening to you, sorry.
Nine forty-five will be in.
We're the first.
I listened to you, Jess.
Yes, we're the first school, and we're very excited. All of our children have collaborated to adopt a senior. So, every one of the seniors will get a special poster created by our students, and so that will be fun. On May twentieth, oh, in May twenty-third, I was listening to you, Jess, that second graders are visiting the intermediate school. Lots of field trips taking place. The big thing is May thirty-first is our elementary track meet. That's a big day for our students. And then the big, big day is June third, which is our hot dog cookout and the last day of school. And this year, Ryan Pease and George promised that my big, huge grill is all like new.
Well, you're playing free hot dog.
Okay. It's a deal. It was falling, hot dogs were going, falling off the grill last year. So, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
All you have to do is retire to your new grill.
It's amazing what happens when you announce your retirement.
Well, I think the last couple of months, I've done a couple of updates right off the top of some compliance indicators from the state, so I won't break that tradition this month. This time, we'll talk about Indicator eleven. That is a report of performance on meeting the timelines from a referral or consent for evaluation to the sixty-day timeline for a team to determine whether or not a child is a student with a disability. We submit some names or names of children that were evaluated over a couple-month period to the state, and then they will randomly select some of those names and come back and check that we're within that timeline. We're in real good shape this year. Last couple of years, a year ago, I think we missed a couple of timelines really due to COVID and kids not being available, being quarantined, being out, where we couldn't send people, even send people in the houses to do testing, things like that. So, I expect, you know, we're going to be in a much better shape this year since things are more favorable in terms of pandemic. Mental health collaboration. People Services Team met virtually with Joanne Greenlee, who is Marshfield's mental health navigator. Marshfield has a really nice mental health support and system for some of their students. They have implemented some partnerships with local counseling agencies and have co-located counseling within their school walls. And so, we've been kind of looking at these systems, and there's an old African proverb, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." And, you know, Amory and our People Services Team have really been looking at this and going with the idea that we need to go together on this, which means take our time to really make genuine interactions and contacts with providers, not to rush into things, to really think through all the tasks and duties that are going to be associated potentially, you know, if we were to go down this road. So, we're excited about that. It's always great to talk to a district that's implemented it, and, you know, we learned a lot of, you know, interesting things and, you know, pitfalls and, you know, hey, if I had to go over again, this is what I would look at or things to consider. So, that was a really enlightening discussion. So, we're going to meet further on that later in the summer and, you know, probably continue the conversation into next year. Prepare Training. Prepare is a training by the National Association of School Psychologists, and it's really sponsored, you know, through the federal government, and it's to address safety, right? And we're talking about crisis management, big, big things that we hope never would happen here or anywhere. So, our People Services Team did day two of Prepare Training. We did a full day of training last year, really reviewing response, how to coordinate crisis management, how to communicate with your local authorities, try to build response plans and crisis management in the case of an emergency. And the one thing, of course, that we always know about planning for emergencies is that emergencies never really go as planned, and you can have a lot of things in a book. So, this is, a lot of Prepare Training is about how do you become more flexible? How do you adapt in the course of the training? And particularly with respect to communication, making sure that you have an incident commander, that you're delegating responsibilities so that communication goes as well as it can go for an unexpected emergency. So, we'll be, re-meeting is the People Services Team to talk about alignment of that communication, some of the language that's used, and go over our reunification procedures in the event of a district-wide emergency. But it's just something, you can never plan for everything, but it's always great to kind of tabletop and do some theoreticals, what if this happened, what would we do? And lastly, just curriculum review and refresh, we kind of take a look at through our PK through twelve, a professional learning community model. We did four of these where we kind of looked at a lot of curriculum. A big one that came out of that was that our Reading Mastery really was in need of an update. Reading Mastery is an evidence-based, systematic, direct reading program. It's used as an intervention program and a replacement core curriculum in special education. It's been around for a long time. It's got a really strong track record. In talking to one of our more experienced reading teachers, you know, she shared with me that I, you know, she's been here for over twenty years, and she's still using the same core set of materials of Reading Mastery. And so, that really, when I heard that, I mean, I knew we were in need of updates, and we've updated at least a couple of the sets while I'm here for teachers, but, you know, that really reinforced its time to go with the newer additions. And so, they're excited to use those updated additions, and they correspond to new learning standards, and that'll be helpful for, you know, better data collection to inform student progress and hopefully, you know, bolster student achievement. So, we're excited about that.
Lots of stuff going on, every building, every place. Thank you.
President, I have a question in regards to Brad. I looked over the agenda and saw what you were going to speak about. Can you go over the grants for the signage that was out there? The "all are welcome here" signs and the "hate doesn't exist here," I believe. There was a grant. Do you remember what that grant was?
That was from the mental health grant, and that was a Katie Johnson, Kate Weisenbeck endeavor. They purchased the signs through the grant, and anyone that wanted one could have one. It wasn't a for-profit industry by any means, but that's how the signs came to be.
Yeah, and I was just, again, I, you know, when I looked at the sign, and can I give my, can I speak and give my opinion?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. You know, I thought they were more of a social, you know, injustice, racial injustice sign initially, and especially when it comes to our schools. I thought the "all are welcome here" sign, you know, I thought that one was, you know, take it from, like, please take my opinion from where I come from in twenty years in law enforcement. You know, let's be really honest, is not all people are welcome in our school, right? Not all people are. There are people who need to stay really far away from schools, pedophiles, stuff like that. And I kept seeing those signs, and I was like, I wonder if this is just kind of falling under the people who need our, our opinion of, or who are falling into this mental health aspects of social injustice and whatnot, I guess. I thought it was just kind of weird. I didn't expect that to fall under mental health. But it was just one of those things where I was hoping that I could just maybe give my opinion of, I mean, obviously, I don't think that "all welcome here" means, you know, pedophiles can come here. So, but it's something, again, I look at and I read and I go, well, that's a farsi. You know, it's not something that's truthful. And, and again, you know, not all are welcome here. We lose many rights. We lose, we lose some of our First Amendment rights, obviously our Second Amendment rights, our Fourth Amendment rights get lessened at schools. So, it was kind of like one of, some of those things I was thinking about, just in my opinion. And I kind of thought some of those signs were also, again, looking at it and like detracting generations. I thought, why are we really that poor off where we have to say, you know, hate doesn't exist here in this home, you know? Just my opinion on the signs. And again, I saw it on the, on your agenda. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from you?
Nope.
Now, we'll move to the summer school.
Okay. On behalf of Laura Shogren, we're giving you a snapshot of summer school. It's happening rather soon. As Tom had indicated, we have the end of school on June third, then we have a week off to get prepared for summer school. The third, week of the thirteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh are summer school weeks, and then we move into July. We have swim lessons in there as well, Pioneer School on the eleventh of July in that week. And then the first two weeks in the month of August are summer school. So, we have, what, five sections or sessions, week sessions of summer school. The classes themselves, and this is where we get into the substance, we have 4K through eighth grade, English, reading, and math, six weeks of fifty-two different enrichment courses, including Pioneer School, art, physical activity, science and technology, cooking, sewing, crafting, outdoor adventures, and six levels of swim lessons for first graders through eighth graders. So, there's quite an array of offerings, and that attracts a pretty big number. As you'll see on the next slide, four hundred and twenty-one kids, and that doesn't include kids who are in band, weight training, driver's ed, ag ed, and orientations. You're, we're probably driving that number up well past a third into the six hundreds when you add those other groups to the four twenty-one. So, the, the school year ends on June third, but the buildings will not be dormant. They never are. There's lots and lots going on. So, that's the information I have for you in regards to summer school, and I'll take any questions if you have any, or certainly if you have comments.
Do we know, do you have the number handy as far as how many students were involved last year in?
I don't. I don't, but it often is a repeat endeavor where kids are in it year after year until they're aged out of the activities in our likely home, or in the case of middle and high school kids, perhaps working in the summer. But it's a pretty popular, so, it's a pretty popular group of offerings for our summer school, and a lot of credit goes to Laura Shogren, and certainly a lot of credit to the folks that teach these classes because there's great opportunities for kids. We should feel very good about what we do in summer school.
Do we have enough staff?
We do. We do have enough staff, and staff with varied backgrounds and different skills. I mean, you don't always know who brings what to the table in regards to what they can instruct, and I always find it fascinating when I go through the registrations, oh, I didn't know that they even know how to do that, and that's the one they're teaching. Well, that's pretty cool. So, it's a, it's an exciting time in the summer as well. Other questions?
We have just a wide array of classes, and that's just really hats off to the instructors because they do a, they do a bang-up job too, and these kids come out with some really great-looking projects that is fun, and it's an alternative for families to have their kids keep participating and keep learning, and it's, it's been a good.
Last summer, my twins took a Norwegian cooking class, and the, the message throughout the summer was we have to have more Lefsa in the house.
Ludifest.
Okay.
You have to email.
Ludifest. I don't have a skill set in regards to Lefsa. We'll have to purchase it.
Yeah, once.
I'll get you a board.
That's okay.
Okay. Good luck there. Next on our informational is a referendum timeline. As promised last month, come on up, gentlemen. I said we would, we'll come back every month until we're done with this whole thing, some two years from now, giving you an update in regards to what's transpired since the last time we met. So, we passed a referendum on April fifth, question one and question two, and it hasn't been quiet. We've been doing a lot of stuff. And Troy and Gary from LHB and KA are going to hear to share that with you. So, go ahead, Troy.
If you're not tired of me yet. Not yet. Three years. You're going to get tired of me now.
Why, you got to stick around till the end, buddy.
Yeah. Well, I'm from LHB. My name's Troy Miller, and Gary Dithko is with Kraus Anderson. So, there will be two primarily, two primary individuals leading for LHB. It's myself and then Ann Porter. Ann helped George last year on the masonry project, and, and she's a project manager with us. And then with Kraus Anderson, you've met John Hewnig, and Gary is the person who's kind of, Gary and Ann are the, are the people behind the scenes oftentimes that make sure that John and I look, look fantastic. But with regard to your projects, believe it or not, we've already begun. And so, when you look at, when you look at what's happening across the district's footprint, at the elementary school, you know, there's a list of, of things that, that were included in the referendum, but we already had our first meeting. We met, we met administratively, and we started talking about what is it that we need to do to make sure that as we plan the building and we lay it out, nobody's left behind. And so, Cheryl and Nina and everybody is going through the building right now, documenting what every person in the building does. Do they need a permanent home? Are they in transition? Or what type of service do they provide? How many students do they work with? And ultimately, what size of space do they need with what type of equipment? And so, as we gather that information, then we start to figure out what exactly are the big and small pieces that have to happen inside the school to make sure that as we move forward, the eight-point-five-million-dollar second question has everything in it that not only the taxpayers expect, but also folks in the, in the, that work in the school every day with kids have and are, are able to, to use to its fullest potential. So, we've talked about everything in that meeting, from safe and secure to what does an entry look like, to where does the admin really need to go? How do we repurpose space? And, and over the next few weeks, we'll be getting more and more things pulled together. As part of the process, we have what's called schematic design. Schematic design is where we work primarily at the administrative level, looking at what inside the building needs to happen, what are adjacencies. We've talked about staff locations, room sizes, things of that nature. And then, once that process is done, we move to what's called design development. And that's when the staff gets involved. They have input in terms of where does, where does casework, where does casework go? How much do we need? Those types of details. And then we get to a third phase called construction documents, and that's where owner's input really stops. And the reason is because we need time to finish the drawings. Move one sink, and it requires three different engineers in the office to get involved. And then you run into the possibility of not, things got, not getting communicated and things of that nature. So, we really need that time for construction documents to finish everything. And ultimately, for our work, we hope to have every project, every little thing that's being defined, completed by Thanksgiving to turn it over to Kraus Anderson to start getting bids. But for the elementary school, we're at that point already, and, and, and starting to look at the intermediate school. There's not a lot of work at the intermediate school. Most of it is masonry. It's, it's a few roofing projects. It's fixing some doors so that it meets handicapped accessibility requirements and things of that nature. At the middle school, we are doing work in the middle school right now. And, and the middle school, we're basically changing out the heat pumps, updating lighting with new LED systems, replacing ceilings. And, and then inside that building, there's going to be some ADA updates and things like that as well. At the high school, today, we started that process in earnest, and, and we met George and a member of his team at John Glenn Middle School, and we started looking at mechanical systems, durability issues for, if you've got the chipboard walls, how do we make them more durable, and, and things of that nature. And my little shiny ball moment was, Jessica, I was listening to your presentation. It was fabulous, and I listened to all of yours. Wonderful, all the way down. But you in particular mentioned something called Gaga Ball. And so, as we walked through the school today, we came across a gym, and, and there were this recta, or octagonal board setup, and George's comment was, does this school teach mixed martial arts at this grade level? The answer was no. No, this is called Gaga Ball. And George's comment was, I don't think there'll be any Gaga-ing happening in Amory, Wisconsin. So, with that being said, I would anticipate that had you, if you were to raise money for a fundraiser, I would have George be the first person in the Gaga pit, showing his skill set because he's got all summer to practice, and we can show him where to go to get that. But, but that being said, we have science teachers going to Rice Lake, Wisconsin to look at science. We are picking out facilities for many of the programs that are different than what you would typically see in a school. And the reason for that is, if you're looking forward and you're evolving and you're thinking about how you teach and learn, why would you go look at a, at a school science center that is the same way you've been doing it for fifty years? And so, I did, I did Rice Lake, Wisconsin twelve years ago already, and it's something very different than what you see in science departments, you know, in your typical high school. And from there, we can take them over to Farmington, which is about the same vintage, totally different than what Rice Lake is, but still nothing that's very traditional. And so, those meetings are starting along with a number of others, but, but we're going program by program by program, looking at But, but we're going program by program by program, looking at, looking at building systems, durability, and what is it we can actually do and accomplish with the money we have programmatically. So that kind of gives you an idea of where we are and what we've got going on.
To the project timeline slide. But I'll just introduce myself again, just first time with, with this group. Gary Zepko, Senior Project Manager at Kraus Anderson. Been there for 20 years. I just live down the road in Holton. My kiddos go to Hudson. Just finished up a project with Troy and his team up in Shell Lake and over in Cyren. We just finished the Baldwin project with the new, their new sports facility and working in St. Quirrell Falls on their auditorium. So I'm really familiar with the area and the contractors, so looking forward to, to working with you all. As you can see on the slide, as Troy was saying, once, they're going to be working hot and heavy here for the next, next few months. And then come this fall, they'll give the plans to us and we'll send it out to bid to all the contractors. And then that, our hope is to come to you right around Christmas time with what we call the, it's the guaranteed maximum price. So we come and submit the bids from all the contractors and then get approval. And we start planning and procuring for a startup construction in the spring. So that's our, the plan is to start both big projects, high school in the, in the addition at the elementary in the spring of '23. The elementary school addition would be done by the end of the year or early in '24. And then the high school would be done in the fall of '24. So we'll start working with George because there'll be a lot of work at, at the high school for that, that year and working around the kiddos. And, but we're starting that process now and looking forward to coming back and giving you more updates, so.
All right. And there's one more. Some stuff has happened here in the summer.
Yeah, so I kind of mentioned it earlier a little bit, but we are doing work this summer. And, and actually, it has already begun. So some of the mechanical systems and components that are being changed out are already arriving or getting ready to arrive on site. With the referendum, we're replacing all of the lighting for the most part at the middle school and as well as the ceiling. So when you have summer school there this summer, we will be intermixing construction staff and students as each, each is trying to get to where they're trying to go. And so coordination and communication in that building will be important as we want to make sure that we're not having lots of messes where kids are going to be. And, and we make sure that contractors realize when they come to work what, which areas they can't work in until, until the kids are gone from the building. So there's a, there's a lot that's being done. There was an item here on energy efficiency. As we go through the building, that's a large part of what we're also improving is deferred maintenance and any system that's being updated is, is energy. We talked about the high school today and the fact that the high school as it currently sits doesn't even meet Energy Star, which is a pretty low bar to get over. And, and so we talked today about different systems that, you know, could potentially reduce the energy consumption in that building by over 30%. So, you know, some big things happening, and anytime we can go through and do things like this to save money, looking forward, that's just dollars that go back to the classroom instead of, instead of sending them to utility companies, so.
That, I don't know, I'm not going to pick me up. The fluorescent lighting that we're going to be replacing and then switching that out to the LED lighting, not only was it just kind of the energy efficiency, which is equating back to dollars back, but we also had kind of talked about that before with the buzzing, right, of those lights? So that will be gone now with the more energy-efficient LED lighting, correct?
Yep. And some of them will be tunable fixtures. And when we say tunable, I think in special ed, we're doing full color light rendition, which is important because we need to pull the yellow out. Because yellow is a, yellow is a, is a color that doesn't work well with students on the spectrum for autism. It's kind of a trigger color. So we try to pull the yellow out of the light fixtures and get a more calming, calming color, which is more towards the blues. And, and LED just provides a wonderful platform for all of that to happen. And even getting into the classrooms, we're dropping some of the light levels because before COVID, the number one cause of, of trips to the nurse in newer facilities was, was glare because the new energy code and the amount of light that's being delivered in classrooms is so powerful that kids are getting migraine headaches. So putting a lot of these systems in provides opportunities to address some of those concerns as well.
Do you work with lighting specialists when you determine like square footage? And then the candle lumens and all that thing?
Yep. So the electrical engineers, they, they design the systems, and then they work with each of the manufacturers. So some manufacturers, sometimes it's hard to bid out some of the work because the manufacturers make a point of being different enough that you can't compare apples to apples. So what we do is we bid, we build around systems that are proven and provide maybe lower maintenance and operational costs. And, and then provide also saying that if you have a system that you think would be workable but less expensive, we'll entertain that. But you have to let us know your parameters so we can make sure that, you know, the light calks and everything meet the energy code as well as what's needed in every classroom. So, so yeah.
Lots of work going on.
Lots. Lots.
It's only begun.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next, we'll move to our action items. And first up is our referendum financing resolutions.
We have a couple of resolutions that Lisa Voison from Baird is going to help us understand and walk us through. So Lisa, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Those guys are important, but you're way more.
They don't.
They don't have nothing.
I actually sat in a board, at a board meeting, and I, we had to read the entire eight-page resolution. It was one of their board policies in Beloit. And so we took 45 minutes, and I had to read the entire resolution. And believe me, no one was listening, really. I wasn't even listening. I was, I was, ugh. So a lot of this is boiling, so. But I just briefly, because I know we went over this in length and in detail many times with the administration, last board meeting in April, I think even Joe, you were in the audience. We've kind of reviewed and gone over this. We've been working very hard since April 18th, when I was here last, putting together all the documents that need to be put together. And today, we had a great bond rating call with Moody's. And you guys did it, you just knocked it out of the park. I mean, we, we just hit all the points we needed to hit to keep, to maintain that AA3 bond rating. So fingers crossed, we won't know for about a week or two because it takes that much time for them to process through all the paperwork and documents to assign a bond rating. But once we have that, then we're going to hit the ground running hopefully and lock in. The market settled down a little bit, just a little, little bit, a couple of days in a row now towards the end of last week and even today where we've seen more of a flat. Not going back down, but at least it's stabilized a little bit. I mean, there was a time where it was just every single day it was an increase. So I'm still hoping for right around that four, low 4% for the large 20-year bond issue. We'll see how it goes. So you have two resolutions on the agenda. The first resolution is authorizing the bond anticipation note. That's the bridge loan that's going to get the money invested as quickly as possible. We bid that out to several banks, and lowest bank was Zion's. We work with them all the time at a 1.88%. And so that will be the funds that are going to be deposited into your project account. So it's a full referendum dollar amount, and it will start earning interest to the tune of $30,000 to $50,000 a month, starting June 1. The second resolution is the setting the parameters for the long-term bonds. And so what that does, so the parameters, payment dates, call date, paying, who's your paying agent, all the principal paybacks. How much can we change principal when it comes time to actually locking in interest rates? So how much can we move your payments around? All those kinds of things are put in there. Maximum interest rate is 5%. That's a parameter. So that's the second resolution. It's establishing the parameters for the long-term loan. As soon as that's in place tonight, and as soon as we have the bond rating in place, then we're going to start looking at finding a really good day to lock, lock interest rates. So that's a brief overview of the two resolutions that are on the agenda. Are there any questions?
So resolution one, the first one, we basically get the money and at a, it looks like 1.88% rate, right? And that's till, I think, November, December 1st?
Yep. But we'll probably call it on the call date, on September 1.
All right.
In fact, we will. We'll call it on the call date.
Got it. And then after that, we'll, we'll kind of lock into the more.
The 20-year loan fixed rate for 20 years. And start, your first payment on that would be next year. Still hitting the targets that we set at the referendum.
Help us understand, Lisa, because there's a narrative out there that people have wondered about, including some folks here in this room. Why can't we simply just enter into an arrangement to finance this money on April 6th, the day after we pass this? It's a pretty commonly asked question. Help us understand that.
Well, there's a process, and there's a lot of paperwork and documentation and reporting that we have to do. And we can't do anything until after April 6th. So the time alone, just to build a 32-page, what I would call official statement, which you might refer to as like a prospectus if you're selling stocks. Well, a bond creates a 32-page official statement or 38 pages of data that takes weeks to gather. And that's what we, we have, we put together. And we literally had off the press what, what Friday because we had to have that for the bond rating agency to look at for the call today. We also have to engage an attorney to help us with our due diligence on that document because it's, it's your document. You own it. And there's a process with that as well. In fact, we have to get through that next step. So there's many steps when you're talking about borrowing this, these kinds of funds through the municipal bond market that can't be done overnight. Is that, answer your question?
That's awesome. Thank you.
You need a municipal ATM.
A debit card?
Yeah. No, no.
So you would need a motion unless there's further discussion with these resolutions to pass?
Anybody got any other questions? I think the key here is our trust in you and Baird Financial.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You've helped us out with interest rates and getting us to where we are today.
Well, I was thinking about that as I was walking in today, remembering back to the Steve days and doing a lot of work at this district, so thank you.
Changing that, yes.
What are the interest rates today?
I, I'm hoping for four, or today, oh, that's a good question. They're probably still under 4% for a 20-year AA3 bond. They're probably still under, under 4%, but not too much under.
Right. Yep.
I make a motion that we approve these two resolutions.
Okay. Erin has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Joe? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, a lot of work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's not going to happen overnight. All right. Now our revision to our budget. Wait, we're supposed to wait for Lisa to leave, weren't we?
All right. All right. Well, the DPI in the state of Wisconsin, if there's any significant change to your budget, whether it be revenue or expenses during the course of the fiscal year after you have passed the original budget, you're required to make the change and have it be lowered down by the board. In this case, it, the change is obviously to our capital projects funds. Something happened in April that caused us to take on $43.5 million in debt. So we have to account for that in this. And if you look at what's displayed up there, you see the $43.5. That's going to be Fund 49, which is going to be our referendum debt that we take on. The $1 million below, that's a change as well. That's the anticipated expenses in this fiscal year that we think we're going to be having. I've worked with Kraus Anderson and John Hewnig. He came up with a timeline preliminary. Obviously, things change as you go as what do you expect to spend this year versus next year versus 2024. And this is a change we need for this year that's submitted to the state, so. Any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward, I think.
Do I have a motion for the revision to our budget?
I'll make a motion. We approve the revision to the 2021, 2022 budget.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Char. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. No. Dr. Duffler, you get the.
Okay. We're on to the handbooks, the first of which is the Certified Staff Handbook. You'll see changes highlighted on the document. The first set of changes you've already seen are name changes based on changing in positions. We've got a change coming up here, Amory Hospital and, oops, oh, that's, that's the other one. Just the date. Yep. This one, there wasn't really much to do other than the name changes. So this is the handbook for Certified Staff. And you, I don't know if you want to take these one at a time or all at the end. What you've done in the past is do them all, all at the end of Certified Staff, all at the end of Support Staff. But you can do whatever you want.
You want to do the, all together?
I would do that all together.
Okay. If that works, go ahead.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the Comp and Benefits document for, again, Certified Staff. Date change there, pushing it forward to 2022. The items noted in yellow are the second year of potentially three years of growth in salary, seeking to be more competitive at the beginning, in the middle specifically. At the beginning, this $41,750 number puts us probably above the 50th percentile, moving towards the 60th percentile in the CSA. We're not at the top by any means, and we're not at the bottom by any means. The middle, what we consider to be the middle, what we have looked at most often is the E level, the $53,600 with a master's degree, which makes it $55,600. We want to be more competitive there. And really, the big reason we want to be more competitive there, if you're going to make a career change, you're more likely to make a career change moving from one district to the other or moving out of education altogether between years five and 10, as opposed to year 20 or 25, when you're vested into the retirement system much further along. And that's where we have, if we have lost anyone, it's in that B through E level. So that's the marker for middle growth. And then the final marker is the I level, which you'll see moving forward here. It did not move forward last year. So that's a change. Again, nothing has changed in regards to this from the last time you saw it. The numbers in yellow and red there are the same. If you move further down, we've got the PDH language. That hasn't changed. We want to cap it at 10 for a book study, and we want to give more credit for hosting a student teacher. We have, in fact, hired many student teachers here in recent years, and we're fortunate to have done so because they've been fantastic. A little further along, the name change for Amory Hospital and Clinic. We make that change in a, in a medical provider of their choice. They don't have to go to Amory to get a health examination. They can go wherever they typically go. Onto the leave language changes, which I believe is coming up right there. You see lots of color here. The yellow is what you saw last time. The blue is what's additional. So let me walk you through this. And I know there's a lot of information here, and you can certainly ask questions at any point. I won't be offended if you interrupt me. It begins by stating, "Personal leave is to be used for compelling personal obligations which cannot be reasonably conducted outside the employee's workday." Personal leave is defined as personal days or PDH day trades. If you, if you garner 20 PDHs, you can use that as a day trade. 10, you can trade half of a day. In the second paragraph, it reads at the end of that paragraph, "Employees may take up to two PDH day trades per year," which also will be, which will also be based on their scheduled workday and may some, may be used in increments of no less than a half day. We don't do quarter and three-quarters. The personal leave language here is a departure from where you were last time. You see in the bluish color, rather than seven employees on a, any given day, use a personal day. The total number is four, so you'll see four there, one, two, three, and then a fourth time underneath the yellow section. The yellow section reads that at, the four days will be honored on a first-come, first-served basis, beginning July 1, 2022, at 8:00 a.m. at the district office. All requests beyond the four granted personal day will be denied. A maximum of two staff may be using personal days on Fridays. All requests beyond the second will be denied. Requests for personal leave must be submitted using the Request for Leave Report Absence Form, including a supervisor's signature. The district administrator has the right to approve or disapprove of all requests. Here's the significance of Friday. Here's the significance of four. We have sub shortages in this district. We have sub shortages in this district. We can't shoulder the load any longer of having seven personal days in one day. When we do benchmark testings, regular sickness, and other trainings, we simply are getting to the point where seven is not a sustainable number, therefore reduced to four. The significance of two, and I don't like reporting it this way, but these are the facts, so I'm going to report it this way. May 6th, which is a Friday, May 13th, which is a Friday, May 20th, which is a Friday, May 27th, which is a Friday, have seven personal days for each one of those. And I can't imagine, using the first sentence, that all of those personal obligations which cannot be reasonably conducted outside of the employee's workday are all happening on Fridays. So Friday, we're going to limit the number. We have added in that next sentence, and I'll soon turn it over to all of you for your questions, "Personal leave cannot be used on parent-teacher conference days or on in-service days. Personal leave will not be granted for the following days." So rather than spell it out in language, I literally worked with the administrator, or the district office staff, and spelled it out, these actual dates, and their in-service, parent-teacher conference dates, and dates surrounding breaks in February and March. We need our staff here when our kids are here. We have awesome subs, but no one is a replacement for the actual teacher that's in that classroom with those kids. So that's the section in its entirety, and I'll certainly take your feedback, comments, questions, however you see fit. So go ahead.
So they also, our employees also, this is Certified Staff, have three days of emergency leave.
Yes, there are 10 sick days, two personal days, and three days of emergency leave.
Okay, and I was noticing that emergency leave, I've lost it, but, oh, here it is, can be used for a funeral.
Yes.
So you would find that out a few days in advance, but usually not.
You would, you wouldn't know that one.
But usually not, you know, months in advance.
Or an emergency medical situation. You got to have your appendix out all of a sudden, you could never have planned for that.
Right. Is that, would that fall under sick leave, though?
It can, but it's an emergency situation.
So it could be either one.
Having had mine out, I know full well I wasn't expecting that to occur. It just happened.
This is just a question, but, and probably not something we could maybe change right away, but have we ever thought about paying out personal leave days to encourage staff not to take their personal leave?
We have, some districts have done that, and they've done that with mixed results, mostly negative results. And the reason that that's the case is because of a budgetary concern about paying them for that. But we can do whatever we see fit to incentivize those who are here. What most of the manufacturers in town have reported, in my conversations that I have been a part of with them, is incentive clauses for attendance, incentivize those who already had good attendance, and those with poor attendance, it didn't change a thing. And I'm, I'm not here to say we have staff with poor attendance. I am here to say that we have staff that don't have as good attendance as I would hope that they would have.
Right, well, you just, I mean, you have staff that are going to use their personal leave days every, you know, they want to use them up versus staff that maybe are not using them, and if there was a financial incentive to not use their personal leave days, then maybe...
That's one school of thought, certainly. There are schools around us that literally, the last day of school, the district administrator walks around and hands out money, which I have no interest in doing, but there are districts that do that, like literally hands out $50 and $100 bills to folks that haven't used their days. But, again, that seems like a bad moment for me or for some.
Yeah, I wouldn't be.
I wouldn't want to do that.
Doesn't seem like a...
But there are districts that pay people for unused days, certainly.
Again, if we're trying to encourage people to be here when students are here, you know, that...
Our hope in the district office, and I think as part of the advisory committee, and these three ladies here are part of that advisory committee, our hope would be that people would see the value in the days that are unused in the form of sick days. You get paid for those days in retirement, so hopefully, folks would be judicious in the way that those days are used, and I think many, many folks are. Some certainly aren't, but by and large, folks are because they know they have worth at the end of the rainbow when you retire, and some folks leave with a whole big bunch of days, which is a great thing because that means they were here all the time, and we need them here all the time.
And so we have some representatives of that advisory committee here tonight, and so were these changes run by that committee?
These, the changes you see in, in blue, no, I have not met with them with the changes in blue. Have we had discussions about this topic? A lot of discussions about this topic.
You know, we had some discussion about this when we all met in the kind of negotiations here a couple of months ago, the deal that I was part of. I guess I know the feeling from the representation committee was hoping that it didn't come to this, but has the situ, well, obviously, with the May situation, the situation hasn't necessarily changed a great deal.
Well, I think it's gotten worse in regards to the treatment of personal days. I think the perception is amongst some staff that they're simply two paid vacation days. If I don't use them, I'm going to lose them. And that's not the dynamic this is supposed to be. It's literally for businesses that you can't ordinarily connect, conduct. For instance, you have a house closing. You don't get to pick the date. It's at the title company at 11 o'clock in the morning. You've got to go, you've got to close your house, you've got to be there. It's not meant to be, let's extend our vacation by adding a Friday and a Monday to it, which is what it's being used as. And the reason I believe that it's being used in that way is because every Friday in May has seven people gone. And that's unsustainable for our district. And what's going to occur, if we don't address that, eventually, there's going to be people gone, and eventually, we're going to have to start doing crazy things like docking pay. And I have no interest in that. That's unpleasant for the environment altogether. So limit the number of days and get kids and, get, get our staff in front of our kids as much as we can.
Does Pam, when she gets these requests for personal days like this, so obviously, you already know the number that we're maxed out.
Yes.
On those Fridays. So does Pam immediately start setting up subs for those days, or do we wait until...
When she gets a request, she fills that request as fast as she can, so she makes sure it's covered. Soon as we get out towards five or six, all of those individuals get an email, and I get an email, and we, I then send out a subsequent email stating, "May 20th, got seven people gone, no more requests will be accepted." And typically, the requests end at that point in time. But prior to spring break, that didn't stop because then we had an eighth, and ninth, a tenth, and eleventh request after that, and three of those people simply called in sick and took a pay doc. That's not a situation I want to be a part of.
Do you think if we implemented these changes tonight, they would take effect for the 2022-2023 school year or contract year? Is this something that we would revisit next year and...
Absolutely, we would revisit in the same timeline we have in the past or earlier if we needed to. We've typically engaged about this immediately in the fall with the committee, and we would engage with you in the month of March, and then here in April and May. Yes, absolutely, we would. This conversation continues. This isn't the end. This is, if you see at the bottom, this has been this handbook. Handbook has been modified a good 10 times, every year now.
I guess since I've been on the board, I have wanted all of the interactions in the business that we do here to be positive and in a positive light for our employees and a positive light for our certified and uncertified staff alike, and I, I feel like this is, it's not positive. It's not a positive interaction.
No, this isn't positive. This is not, I'm with you.
I feel this is a, you know, a slap, like, no, no, bad, bad, you did bad, and I hate feeling like that. But I guess I also hate feeling like there would be some advantage taken of...
What I get to...
Really good benefits of what we've offered in the past, and with that, we did kind of lenient those days out of not using...
Well, there's a couple of things here. The staff are not paying for personal days, and staff still have 15 days at their disposal. What I get nervous about is in this room, every Tuesday morning, we meet, and the conversation last Tuesday morning was, are we going to be able to have enough staff to cover these subs for the 20th and the 27th? And Pam, thankfully, was able to cover it, but it gets a little thin when you get out towards 17, 18, 19 people gone. This helps fix that problem. The other thing, and many districts have already done this, they're simply taking all of these sections and getting rid of the titles, and there's your one pot of days. These are called personal leave time, 10 days. We're not concerned with what they're for, whether it's an emergency, a house closing, an appendectomy, or you're sick, or you went on a college visit with your son. It's just one pot of days.
And that was on the table. It was discussed.
It, I think it still is on the table, because if this doesn't fix it, the two next things that we have to then look at are having to pay for your personal days again, and one pot of days, because it's gotten unsustainable in the district office, to be quite honest. And I know that doesn't sound negative, or doesn't sound positive, but this has become negative. It very much has.
Sean, what are other districts doing with this?
All over the map, there are districts going from very similar model to this. There are districts that are blocking out entire months, as in, you cannot take a personal day in the month of April, May, and September. There are districts that are blocking out the beginning and the end of school years. There are districts who are doing the week before and after spring breaks. There are districts that are mirroring the support staff language of, this year, pot of PLT, you get one every month, you earn one every month. There are districts doing that. There are districts that are going with 15 days, eight days, 10 days, 12 days. They're all over the map. I'm simply trying to help solve a problem, and I'm not sure how to do it, other than to limit the number of avenues to get there, and seven has become too many. Because seven was introduced probably back when Act 10 occurred, back in 2011, maybe before, I don't know.
Have we ever been at the point where we've had, like, these seven people, plus then, I mean, that's just seven personal days. So that doesn't take into account all of the people that are out on, that could be sick or could have an emergency or couldn't have any of those other days. Trainings, and so have we ever gotten to the point where we've had a sub set up and the sub themselves have gotten sick or something come up and they can't make it?
Some, but what we do have happen is these folks end up being classroom teachers. And if they're classroom teachers, that's also not a good idea, because we're also in the worst time of year in regards to subs for normal reasons like athletics. We have a lot of our staff that coach, and they need to leave at 1, 2 o'clock to get to their event, and who's ending up filling in? Not always a sub. Sometimes it's one of these folks. And in the months of April and May, a lot of times, it's these folks. They can't be out of the office away for an hour or two hours at a time, but they are. So I, God love them for doing that, but this will help solve that problem.
I guess, you know, and that's where I like the idea of paying them, paying the days out and rewarding them for not using the days as, as a more of a positive way to encourage them to not use these personal days.
Yeah, I feel like, I don't know if there's a real good answer here, but it seems like maybe a bad situation going a little worse, and maybe we need to have a meeting, like, probably not going to happen by the end of the year, but like early next fall?
We'll meet immediately in September. Are you referring to the advisory committee?
Well, yeah, I'm looking at kind of the group of people here.
Yeah, we meet five, six times a year. Early September, we'll have our first meeting, certainly not on the calendar.
Because I know typically, we meet probably, what, March?
Well, we're going to meet in the fall for certain because we're going to start taking a look at the retirement language, and these changes could potentially be connected to the retirement language, because if you're going with one pot of PLT, you're changing the entire, the entirety of the retirement language. And I can, I can tell you how Certified Staff feel about one pot of PLT. It would be a gigantic two thumbs down. I know that's how they feel. I don't want to do that either, but I'm also trying to avoid having to police who is where. They've said they used a personal day, now someone's told me that they're actually not using a personal day, they're on vacation in California, and then they're saying that, well, that's not really where I was, but, yeah, on Facebook, that's where they were, we're having to dock pay. It's games I just don't want to engage in anymore, and I don't think any of us should have to.
Any input from your folks?
Things pop up on the schedule from time to time that people don't necessarily have a lot of control over, you know, weddings, you know, there's lots of things that pop up. And, you know, a lot of people will say that teachers have, you know, you've got all this time off built into your schedule. Well, that doesn't necessarily mean that the events in their life that they need to take a day off for fall into that same exact schedule as well. Is it fun filling in, covering the classroom? Well, sometimes it's a lot of fun, but...
Tell you back to your work.
You're speaking like it's your department.
All right, and...
It's happening more than you think, though. Like, right now, I have, I have six or seven fall coach, or spring coaches in my building alone, and so there's four or five times a week where, between me, the guidance counselor, and one other person are covering a classroom, usually from about 1:30 on, but it's every week, five times. You know, it's like, sometimes there's three all gone at the same time because there's two baseball coaches and a tennis match. Those are totally different issues, but having to come in and cover subs that are gone all day, that happens sometimes, you know. We make it work. The one concern I have is like, for instance, I was gone on Friday because my son, you know, graduated. I knew that graduation was coming up, but I didn't know exactly what, what day it would have been on, and I would have hated if all of a sudden, oh, there's only two and I couldn't go, because I wouldn't want to miss that. But there's never really an easy answer to any of it.
Do you need this to be changed to effectively run your school? I think that's the main question I have.
I think, I think that there needs to be some adjustment from where it is right now. I'm not sure that, where that line is, but...
Right, is this thing too severe to go to...
Is that an adjustment, meaning from seven to four?
And, and only two on Fridays, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, and only two on a Friday? That's not very many. Is that too severe?
If I were to think of reasons why people would use these legitimate, you know, you got to, if you have to leave town for a wedding, you know, you're going to leave on a Friday. Or, you know, I guess that...
Or at a state... I guess for that, though, you...
Or a graduation, if you have a...
Right, a state graduation.
Child graduating at college or something, I mean, that's, obviously, we don't want anybody to miss that. But, yeah.
Yeah, I guess a wedding, you know, usually the weddings are on Saturdays. If you're leaving town, there's ample time to leave town at 3:30 on Friday and get there in plenty of time for a wedding on Saturday, usually.
Well, yeah, I mean, depending on where it's at. I mean, if it's in Wisconsin, you could, but if it's in California or wherever.
The easiest solution, then, is to just do one pot of days. Then you don't have to worry about the number. 10 days, whatever days you have, emergency, personal, sick, it's just one pot of days. You don't, none of them have a title, it's just, that's easy and clean.
And then you don't limit the number of people that can be gone?
You can limit the number, but with fewer days, it's probably likely to be fewer people using days in rapid fashion.
And Sean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, too, this also got a little worse after we decided not to have them pay for their personally time off, too.
Right, because they used to have to pay for their own subs.
Yeah, so that's kind of a reason not to take off, I guess, if you look at it that way, but...
Right. And when was that changed?
Last year.
So this is the first year that this was, that was in effect?
Yes.
And they had to pay 125?
Hundred.
Just 100?
Less than the sub rate, yeah.
125, no. If you, if you don't want to do one pot of days, if you want to solve that, the problem of people using their personal days on every Friday in May, paying for the days is the means to that end. And again, I can tell you how the members of the advisory committee feel about that. They've worked for the better part of 10 years to not have that. But if, if we want to solve the problem, this is a manner to solve it, personal manner, paying for personal days is a manner to solve it, as is one pot of days.
Well, it would seem like having seven people gone every Friday in the month of May is a problem. That's, that's a tough problem to deal with.
Do you ever ask why they're taking a personal day?
I'm never going to ask someone why they're taking a personal day. That's going to, that could go any number of directions that might make improper for me to ask the question. I've never asked. They oftentimes just tell you or put it on the form.
Sure.
Then I'll know. I don't see the sub forms anywhere. Only person that would ever know that is someone that's, that sees it, which would be Pam Robards or Twila and Ben Payroll, but I don't see the forms. These individuals do when they're signing them. These individuals do when they're signing them.
Like I said, other schools do, I've seen it all across the board, too. I've also seen where they've converted them to sick days if they don't use them at the end of the year, you know, and it goes into their bank for sick days. I mean, that's, if you want to research this more, you certainly can, but I mean, I've seen anywhere across the board, like Sean said, so...
Yeah, I, you know, I just don't really like this.
You know, I guess we could, if we're going to act on this as a whole, we could act on this as written tonight with a, with an understanding of an ongoing conversation that would take place maybe early in the, before the school, maybe in August. We can always amend this going forward.
Yes.
So, should we table this, you're saying?
I'm not saying to table it, I'm saying to actually, you know, either to have a vote on this tonight, either that we're going to pass this, or we're not going to pass this tonight. If we don't pass it, obviously, it just goes back to the, to the drawing board. But we could, if we do pass it, we could take a look at this and put it on the agenda again in August, and then we could have some ongoing conversation along the way.
I guess I wonder why wait till August? I mean, we can look at it between now and June 26th.
Sure, whatever, I don't know, care.
If there's a, there's a logistical problem at hand in that we are sending out contracts, certified staff tomorrow.
Right.
And they're signing their name on the dotted line, the terms of my work are X, Y, and Z, these are the terms of their work.
Right.
Yep, yeah, I mean, it would be the understanding, obviously, that this would be adopted for the 22, 23 year, if we pass this tonight, to take effect of the contract.
We wouldn't even be discussing if this, if there wasn't a problem.
No, I would not bring this, I would not bring this to you if it was smooth sailing, it has not been.
And if we fail this tonight, if, if there is a motion to accept, and that didn't happen, and we ended up failing this, then what would be the impact of them contracts going out? It would just revert back to the old?
If you did nothing with this, this section, it would simply stay as it is presently printed.
Right.
Which would be the seven, and nothing for Fridays. It would just be the language in black without any, any yellow or blue.
Yep.
Which certainly an option, if that's what you choose to do.
But it isn't going to help the problem that we're...
I don't know that, I don't think it will, no. I think you'll have the exact same problem next year, and I think it will be an epidemic in February and March, where we have some built-in four-day breaks, which will become significantly longer breaks, where teachers are not in front of kids.
It would seem like we need to have something, or we should have something approved tonight to finish the counter, contract process, right, to get those out.
That would be helpful, yes.
And then, I think this section needs to probably, I mean, we're going to finish the school year as is.
Sure, yes, this wouldn't become effective until July 1, no matter what you do.
So, it seems like we would have, really have some time before the start of the school year, where people would be using these.
Right, but this is going out tomorrow, and this is going to be part of the contract they're signing tomorrow, so, or they're getting tomorrow to be signed in the next, you know, couple of weeks.
But we can always change it.
Yeah.
President, I motion to, I move to accept the changes of the employee handbook, certified staff book, and support staff book.
So, we haven't even talked about the support staff?
Sorry, certified, certified staff book.
You want to do the certified staff handbook and the compensation package?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so you've made the motion to accept it as written. Is there a second? I'll second it.
I, I would like to amend, I mean, I think we should amend the Fridays and leave them at four.
Aaron, can you be specific?
I would like to see that there, we don't change the language that says a maximum of two staff may use a personal day on Fridays, but that we just leave it as all requests beyond the fourth granted personal day request will be denied. We, and we scratch the two on Fridays, and you're welcome to chime in, Dr. Durthler, but I think that we should take that part out.
My recommend, I brought my recommendation here, and I respectfully listening to what you all have to say and what you decide. Simply trying, my intent is to reduce the number from seven, because seven is too big of a load to shoulder at this point in time.
So, what you're, what you're saying is all requests beyond the fourth granted personal day request will be denied?
And then scratch off, a maximum of two staff may use a personal day on Fridays, all requests beyond the second will be denied.
So, every day looks the same, Friday is not a part of the conversation.
Fridays don't look different than any other day. Do you have people that are like, they have to be in person, it says, right?
Yes.
On July 1st at 8:00 AM? Are people here at 8:00 AM on July 1st with their...
Oh, they haven't been in the past, but I can virtually guarantee you they will be this year. We already have request, three requests for next year, and they don't even have the days yet.
Yeah.
And they're all for spring break time.
Which means that we would be denying them, because they're, they would be...
Well, this language changes when you can travel during the months of February and March. There's blackout before and after those breaks. There is a break built in February, March, and April, and that was a product of the calendar committee wanting to do that. There's five possible travel days for families in March, four for staff, and also four in the month of February and April. But the requests for next year are all for spring break time, and I can guarantee you, what will occur is we'll have, whatever the capacity is, on whatever day that can be used around our spring break, will happen on July 1st. Four, seven, two, whatever it is, they'll be filled up. And I want folks to be able to travel as well, but we want our staff here when our kids are here. Because there's nothing better than that educationally.
So, these days that you have spelled out, as far as, you know, that no personal day will be approved?
Yes.
Some of them are parent-teacher conferences.
Well, let's run through them quickly. The 23rd, 24th, and 25th of August are in-service days.
Yep.
September 26th in-service day, the October 3rd day is a parent-teacher conference day.
Uh-huh.
October 6th is parent-teacher conference and in-service. November 7th is in-service. January 20th is in-service. February 13th mirrors the 16th and 13th of February, looks just like October. One's in-service, the other's in-service slash conferences, or 13th is conferences.
Yeah.
The 16th is in-service and conferences.
Yeah.
Wednesday, the 15th is right before our Thursday, March 16th in-service day, followed by Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, already scheduled off. Tuesday, the 21st is that 21st, the date right after that Monday, the 20th that we have off. Thursday, the 6th is the day right before Good Friday. Easter Sunday is on that Sunday. And then Tuesday, the 11th is the day after the Monday, which is scheduled off. There's a 7, 8, 9, 10 off, so the 6th and the 11th simply bookends that. That's what those days are for each of those.
Obviously, a great deal of thought has went into looking at the calendar and planning for those days.
So much so that I've already looked at next, the 23, 24 calendars, there's a draft on my desk that looks at these issues right then and there. And there are some more aberrations that are in that calendar, based on where September 1st falls, where Easter falls, where Christmas falls. That's a conversation for another day. But yeah, we spend a lot of time, the administrative team probably gets sick of me bringing it, we probably look at it five, six times. Calendar committee meets on it, just sends that calendar out multiple times. So, it certainly isn't done in isolation. Aaron's on that committee, Tom's on that committee, Chelsea has been, one of you certainly can sit on that committee.
Well, it's not helpful for me to sit on that committee, because I work every day, and so this is, this is so foreign for me. There are no days off for me, and I don't drive, so it's, it's hard for me to, you know, even wrap my head around planning that far out, but I understand that people do it, that have normal lives, so, not me.
Don't have animals that require...
Right, right, 24/7, so...
What's our total impact then, on our schedule, our salary scale?
We have that, we presented that last time, the total impact on salary for certified staff you're talking?
Yeah.
The yellow, so there's the natural movement of a person went from a B3 to a C1, a C3 to a D1. There's that impact, which is a natural impact that you can't prevent.
Yeah.
This is an additional impact of about 160,000, 150,000, the addition to the scale, if you will. Is that impact? We sought to break it out over three years, rather than moving a grand step forward in one year.
Yep.
We thought that would be more delicate for the budget to do that, so that's the impact.
I guess Keith, you bring up a good point, too, that this isn't just about, I mean, unfortunately, we spent all of our time sitting here talking about time off.
Right.
Which seems to be what people covet the most, but there is financial impact here to this budget, that I think people forget that for a long time, wages were frozen, and, and nobody got anything.
Yeah.
Financially in the paycheck, so I think you bring up a good point, Keith, that there is more to this than just days off.
We're spending 10 minutes talking about some days off, and we spent 15 seconds on roughly 160,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I mean, I don't, I don't like this either, from the standpoint that, you know, people, that our staff should want to be here, because that's how it's best for the kids, you know? And I know we're not talking about the majority, by any means, and so I, I struggle with it, too.
I guess, yeah, my biggest thing is like, listening to Tom say, we had a graduation, and it's on Friday, and I didn't know it was going to be on Friday, but do you have those people that come at, at 8:00 on July 22nd, and locking in those days already? Then what happens to a Tom who can't, because somebody in July locked in days for May of 2023, now Tom can't go to, you know, somebody's graduation? How does that work? I mean, how do we, how do we deal with that?
Well, some would say you just do it by seniority, that that's also a problem, too. So, two people went on their honeymoons this last spring, and they weren't going to be able to go, because they were least senior. That didn't seem fair either. Which is another reason, if you just did one pot of days, then you'd probably have less of that going on.
So, at 8:00, so let's say 8:00 on, on July 1?
Yes.
So, you get four requests?
Yes.
Do you automatically approve them then, and then...
They would need to have gone through these channels and get the signature from their supervisor, filled out the right forms from March 15th, or whatever the day is, depending on what you do here.
But the plan is to take it in the order they're received, I think, is what Sean is asking.
So, what I'm saying is, all of a sudden, Tom doesn't know until, when did you find out?
Well, the problem with that is, it was a Friday graduation, not a Saturday graduation.
That's what I mean.
And the universities weren't sure what they were doing, there's a COVID and things, so things were on hold, and they announced it late.
Right.
And so, I wouldn't have been able to go. And I wasn't, the problem is, I wasn't the only one, there were other Amory teachers that had kids graduate on Friday as well. You know, I know Janice Tonic had a student graduate as well.
I know, we had a student graduate today, like, on a Monday.
Yeah.
So, if, you know, if you're talking like on a, another, like, a Monday after a break, then that wouldn't have been, you know, couldn't have went either. So, how, how do we do that? I mean, I don't want to see anybody miss out on some monumental experience like that, all because we just decided, yep, this is the way it goes tonight. How do we do that?
If, if that's, if that's the disposition, then I think you should take the yellow and the blue and go where we're at.
And go with?
What the, the, the print as it presently is in the school year 21, 22, but I don't know that we've solved the problem.
Well, that's what I'm saying, how do we solve the problem, but then not create another bigger problem?
If you, if you want, if you want, are you asking?
I am.
Okay.
I don't know, I have, I don't...
The easiest way to solve the problem is you pay for your personal days. That's the problem solver, if you want to do it. Then you could take the yellow and blue, and you can mark it up some, but you won't have to. I can tell you how certified staff feel about it.
I can see that, sitting here, and I hate personalize, I hate penalizing everybody, but then, I mean, it's not fair. So, and this was my exact conversation that I had one year ago, sitting in that room, that this was going to happen. And I will tell you this, at a standard $40,000, and would, above that now, if you're paying for a personal day, which was paying for your sub, your day that you're, you're, what is a $40,000 a year person, what are you making? Your daily rate is 200 and some dollars? I don't have my calculator out. So, you're literally not even paying a whole day of your salary.
Your per DM is higher than 100, that is true. So, if, if you, you're asking, that would be my answer?
I know, I know it's bad, but I, how do you, how do you justify saying that somebody can't go to something, all because people stand in line at 8:00 in the morning, and, and lock in days for a whole year? Again, foreign to me, because I don't do it, I can't, I don't plan tomorrow. So, but I can't, I can't, I couldn't stand to see somebody that, for somebody who has a feel of importance for those things to happen, not a vacation, but those monumental things in your life that revolve around your children, or your family, or anything like that, to say, no, you can't go, because a board sat here, made a decision, trying to make a problem go away, because people are overextending vacations, when they're supposed to be professionals, and get vacations, I don't feel good about.
But the flip side of that is, now you're telling me I have to pay $100 to go see my kid graduate?
Would it be worth it to, for you, I would do it, it would be worth it for me to pay $100 to go see my kid graduate, as long as I knew I could go see my kid graduate? Would you?
So, Sean, the other thing is that it's this, or it's even worse, it's pay time off, you know, one clump, one lump sum.
Right, right.
Which is, which would be even worse, right?
I, I would think so, I would think the staff would think so.
Well, it would be worse financially, because you'd have likely fewer days, which is less like, would create less days in retirement that you get paid for.
I'm confused that it would...
In retirement, when you retire, you take your days that you have, so you have 102 days multiplied by the rate of subpay equals...
But the personal days?
No, not personal days, sick days. But if you have one pot of days, that would be, be connected into your retirement language, likely. That hasn't been done yet, because we haven't even started talking yet.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just really can't imagine, I can't imagine somebody missing out on something like that, just because four people came at 8:00 on a, on an arbitrary day, and said, I want to lock in extra vacation for whatever.
President, we have a motion and a second, can we go to the vote?
Motion, the Nate?
No, I, I'm not finished with this discussion, because I think that maybe we could amend it to, if we, if we're still trying, that does not, for me, solve the problem of somebody that can't...
President, can we table this?
Well, we do have a motion and a second, so we do have to vote on it.
Go ahead.
And all those in favor, say aye.
So, hold on, did, did I make a motion to amend this, though?
No.
I didn't, I just suggested it.
Yeah.
So...
There was no second amendment.
So, right. What are, what are we voting on here? Exactly what are we voting on?
Joe made the motion to pass the certified compensation package. As written.
As written.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and as further discussion, do you want to put some verbiage in there, as far as, you know, extenuating circumstance, or whatever, is discretion?
I don't know if you can do that.
I don't either.
I don't know.
It's the last sentence in that blue third paragraph, you know?
So, it's there.
Sean is this, is the administrator of this school, and it's his job to exactly do this, to effectively run this organization to its best. And if he's saying this is what we have to do, he's given us his opinion. Alrighty, this is it.
I understand that.
And that conversation continues, I'll give you an example, last week, Wednesday, Thursday, I had a staff member in to talk to me about the list of days that you see Last week, Wednesday, Thursday, I had a staff member in to talk to me about the list of days that you see there and they were asking about January second. Their daughter participates in the halftime show from their school at the Outback Bowl. That happens to be on Sunday, January first. She's expected to be back here on Monday, January second, because that was on the list. January second was one of those items. So after that conversation, I called Pam and met, met with Twila and said, how many people are gone on the day after Christmas break? Last year, nobody. It wasn't a day people were in pursuit of. January second is not on there. So that conversation will always occur. Am I gonna make exceptional, exceptions for folks? I'm gonna seek to grab the evidence and make good decisions based on that. Can I tell you a lot of people are gone around spring break? Yes. Can I tell you every Friday in May has seven people? Yes. But January second, no one was gone. This last January second's was not on the list.
So is there then movement for above and beyond the four to be, a request to be approved?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking.
So Tom says I have, who says I have a graduation this day, but there's already four people that have locked in, their, their leave has been approved?
No, no one's leave's been approved for next year.
No. Let's say the.
Hypothetically?
That happens.
Okay.
Then, then all of a sudden Tom comes or whoever comes in May first and says, I, I have this graduation and you say, yeah, there's already four people.
We can always go ahead and approve and disapprove all requests if you wanna give me that.
Even above and beyond the number that's locked in.
Yeah, but if we get in exceptional circumstances, I don't think you ever write policy knowing it's gonna be uh, one size fits all eternity. I think there is always that. We've done that, I mean, on a lot of different circumstances.
So.
So the last sentence, you know, of that paragraph basically gives him the latitude to go beyond the four.
So could we then amend that to say the district administrator has the right to approve or disapprove all requests, including days that, including blackout days or including days that have reached capacity?
Well, I think all requests covers it.
All requests would.
Anyone that makes a request for any day.
Right.
But there's a lot of language in there that gives them the latitude to be gone. For instance, when you have a funeral, that's not a personal day thing, that's a change we've made recently. Uh, so there is some latitude in there. You certainly can table this to use, I think somebody said that, if you want to do that, you certainly can.
Well, I feel like we need to have something in place for.
Yeah, I feel like we need to have a.
Staff to.
Then send these contracts out.
Yeah.
Move forward.
There's a motion on the table.
Yep. We have a motion to accept the certified handbook and compensation package as written and presented to us. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye, no, whatever.
One. Joe, did you vote?
I did.
Okay, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. So motion carried?
Do you wanna, I'll call for a, I'll call for an individual voice vote.
Oh, okay, we have.
Just to make sure.
So, to make sure, alright. So those in favor of the uh, changes to the certified staff and the compensation benefit package? Joe?
I'm on the line, yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so it's four to one. Okay, well now we'll go to the staff.
Support staff.
Yeah.
The first document again is the, simply the handbook, which is not much to be seen there. Name changes, again, same name changes. Then the date at the end. Really not much to discuss there.
Yeah.
The um, support staff compensation and benefits document, you'll see, first you'll see uh, the date change and then below that you'll see a lot of yellow. This is a support staff scale that was last visited in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Prior to that, visited around the time of Act Ten in two thousand and eleven. So the yellow is what you saw last time. Nothing has changed about that. Though the conversation last time led us to, can you bring back some options in regards to how to address the custodial column? Which means, how do you address the folks that are not moving forward at all or much? So there are a variety of ways to do that and I'll simply give you what those options are. And if you wanna see them, well Becky's a step ahead of me, she's gonna show them to you. Okay, alright.
Wait a minute, she is on it, I tell you. Remember where they are.
The uh, first manner by which to handle this is to simply leave it as is. You just don't have any yellow, you just go with what is presently in place. So option one, it's, you see no yellow, it's just what is right now.
Yeah.
Option two is the recommended plan that was just on the screen a moment ago. Remember, the impact of that move is two hundred thousand dollars. When you move the yellow to, or the, the black to the yellow. The third option, this is where it goes off script a little bit. You'll see. Are you frozen? Oh, uh, the cost impact would be a two hundred and fourteen thousand dollar impact. And the reason it's fourteen thousand more is because you're moving the custodial column forward closer to secretarial. You're leaving para food service and clubhouse where it is. So you're moving that column, that third column, the custodial column. The fourth option would be a two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar impact. And why that gets bigger is you're moving not just custodian, but you're also moving para food service and clubhouse forward. So you're moving all four of those groups forward. When you move a group forward, you're obviously going to have a price impact. And the fifth and last option is just to move the bottom tier, two hundred and seven thousand dollar impact, the bottom couple, four or five levels, six levels in this case, of just custodian ahead, where there wasn't much growth. So those are the options that uh, stand before you. My recommendation is the one that you saw before we went to this document, which is the proposal for um, movement where the custodians, the food service, the paras and clubhouse are all at the same wage from level one through level nine.
What we have here?
What you have in front of you, yes. Uh, we can continue on with changes unless you wanna chat about this more. Uh, there's just a few others in this document and then we can come back or, or you can motion. Uh, the bus drivers have not received a wage increase in a very, very, very long time. So that's part of this package and also your daily route payment is also been in place for a very long time, longer than I've been here. So your, uh, if you go up to the previous page, your uh, extra driving, which means you're taking a basketball team to Osteola or something similar, is seventeen dollars an hour, whereas before it was fourteen forty-six, so that's a movement forward. And the next page is the bus driver salary scale. Again, the bus driver salary scale as it presently exists is sixty-four dollars and forty-six cents a day for everybody, no matter how long you've been here and has been that way for twenty-plus years. So this presents the same nine levels as you see for the other categories and gives you benefit for having been here longer, because not everyone's in year one. There are people that have been driving for us for two decades and they should get credit for that. So that is the bus driver wage scale.
So they're, they're gonna enter this pay scale.
Where their years of experience would have them land, yes.
So um, do our bus drivers get the per route and the daily and the times?
Yes, so the bus driver, the average route, and shared with me is about thirty-five total miles. So you do thirty-five miles times thirty-five cents an hour, it gets you additional twelve, thirteen dollars. So if you're a level one, driving a route, your daily rate's probably gonna be about eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven dollars with the mileage added in.
Okay, so the per route is not added to the daily?
Nope, per route is as in just morning or just afternoon. Because we have some drivers that have.
Right.
And still are just doing morning or afternoon. The daily is you're doing morning and afternoon.
Got it.
And then the mileage.
Okay.
Perhaps we should travel through the other changes and then come back if we need to. There aren't a great many other changes. We did the New Year's Day as a full day rather than a half day. Uh, employees are able to accumulate beyond a hundred, because that's what the retirement language indicates. Employees who are out of personal leave time and do not come to work are subject to a termination. There are folks that are not coming to work and they don't have PLT, they're just simply not coming. And the reason they're not coming is we have no means by which to replace them in many cases, because we don't have anyone applying. And I think that might be the last change, other than the date.
On the level five, the custodian staff?
Yes.
So is eighteen twenty-five going to eighteen? Is, but that's not really going to eighteen, right?
Nope, and no one will move backwards.
It's still saying it's eighteen twenty-five, right?
Correct. We are soon gonna be in a position where everyone's gonna be above a level five, as I'm gonna be one, two, three, four, or five, so it's gonna be a level playing field for everyone. And we just exited out one of our most senior folks with Steven Lorlander and there are folks that are not that far behind him. Most of our crew is on the younger end. So those are the two documents that go with certain support staff and uh, it's up to you how you wanna proceed.
So, anyone wanna make a motion to accept these two as written?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Aaron and Joe. All those in favor, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Oh, there we go. Next, we will go to uh, zero turn mower. You had.
Ryan. Well, yeah, yeah. Both contracts and then we'll get to, we missed an item.
Did we?
Hold on, Ryan.
Sport letters.
Okay, staff contracts and letters of appointment, just so you understand the difference. Staff contracts are certified staff instructors, teachers. Letters of appointment are all your, their support staff people. So you'll see those three need to be, uh, you need to make a motion to approve those if that's what you see fit to do, because Becky's got them ready to roll, to ship them out tomorrow. The deadline, sort of ready to roll, she's hesitant over here. Uh, the twenty-seventh, which is next Friday, is the deadline to get those done, turned in. And the reason that's significant is because we need to get them signed before they leave. So that's the timeline, so.
Okay.
We need to make a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the staff contracts and letters of appointment.
Alright.
Second.
Second, Sean, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Knock that out. Now the zero turn. Wait a minute.
So currently we only have, we have one zero turn mower. Um, it's got a four hundred and fifty hours on it. And uh, we run into a lot of times where I'm on a mower and we could do, we need to do two fields at once in the same day. And if we can't use our big wide area mower for a playing field, because it won't cut, cut good and it won't look nice. So my idea is to have two of them. And I guess for another reason is if something should happen to this one, we're not mowing. We're waiting for parts, we're doing whatever, and that's getting harder and harder to find. So I'd like to have two, so I could run one with somebody or if something should happen to it, we're always having a mower that we could get our playing fields done with.
Do we have two people that are willing to run a mower at one time?
I've been on way more than I should be, but yeah, yeah, we always have.
It's a legit question.
Two, maybe three.
Well, yeah, I mean, you look in the mall.
Well, I love both grass, so yeah.
So I, today I had Jeff Smallengine brought me another wide mower to try a demo and partially because we were waiting on our big wham. Um, and so we had three guys on mowers today, that, and we still didn't get everything done.
And I will say this does fit within his budget, his equipment budget, so it's not extra. It's just approval of the equipment that would come out of his normal budget, so.
Looking more instead of trading one in and keeping, keeping it this, this time around. Then the next time, we'll just continue a trade and we'll always have two.
Now, there's another batch of mowers at a different length, right? You got sixty inch and?
And seventy-two, which I'm gonna throw a curveball, because I, I was gonna suggest going with a seventy-two because it's wider and, and I think we cover more ground with it. Well, I was able to use one over the weekend and it didn't have enough horsepower with that big of a deck when you get in thicker grass.
What's their current cut?
Sixty. And then going around today, I did a lot of mowing, I found a lot of areas that a seventy-two would not fit.
Yeah.
So I'm kinda going back to, I think we should just have another sixty inch. It's also cheaper and it's in stock. And that's another thing I had an issue with, a lot of these are, they could come July, maybe August. I mean, that doesn't help me.
Yeah. What's your recommendation as far as the sixty inch?
The ten thousand nine hundred on top there for Jeff's, he has that one. He's been very good. He brought that one out to us demo, knowing that we were short on mowers. He's like, oh, just bring one down, you guys can demo it. And it's still here, you left it all day. So it was, I was very happy with him and the Toros I've ran, I ran all the Toros in my previous deployments and I'm very happy with them. And the warranty's better on the Toros than the John Deere. Not that I'm against a John Deere, I mean, it's been a great mower.
I just saw that look, I'm like, what?
Yeah. But the warranty isn't as good.
And it sounds like.
Can I motion? Can I motion to approve the purchase of a lawn mower is uh, from Jeff Smallengine? In, as it's in budget?
The Toro four thousand.
But that, that wasn't gonna be your recommendation though, right? That was gonna be your, your recommendation was gonna be the?
The, the seventy-two, you're right. Thought you couldn't.
But your recommendation was seventy-two inch?
Was. Now is the recommendation is sixty.
So, yeah.
After having done a test run.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm glad you got a test run.
And I made a lot more research and called around and talked to people and it just, they're just weren't happy with it. They're hitting high spots, they're scalping more.
And there's two sixty inch um, Toros from Jeff's Smallengine. Are you thinking like the four thousand series or the six thousand series?
The, I'm thinking the four thousand series. It's similar to what we have in the John Deere.
Yeah.
I don't, I've ran the six thousand and, and the four thousand and they're just a little bit, little bit heavier duty. I don't think enough to make it worth the two thousand dollars more.
Four thousand, yeah, okay.
Or three thousand dollars more.
Okay, so.
I'll second your motion, Joe.
Alright. Alright, motion being seconded to purchase the Toro four thousand series from Jeff Smallengine. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture, Sonny, sitting on that nice tiny lawnmower that's not green.
I'll be first because I'm paying for it, that's what I wanna do.
You're gonna be on the lawnmower?
Yeah.
There you go, you gotta borrow it.
Yeah, they're right there.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, now we'll spend some more money, eh?
Okay, well, the curriculum cycle has brought us to English Language Arts, elementary, intermediate. This is a process that's unfolded basically over the last year and a half. I'm not gonna steal thunder from Jessica and Cheryl, but it has been a painstaking process that a lot of thought has been put into. So they have a presentation they're gonna run through. You're up.
It has, it has been a huge project, an extremely important one, as Sean shared. Since I've been in this role, it has been probably, I don't wanna say quite fifty percent, but probably forty percent of, of what I've done this last year and um, Cheryl and I have done it together. Um, again, it's probably been about eighteen to twenty months throughout this process. Um, May fourth, we had a curriculum oversight meeting. This is the slideshow that we used for that as well. So I'll take you, and feel free to interrupt me whenever you'd like.
You're good, you're doing great.
Um, I wanna kinda take you through some of the steps that we went through. So in twenty twenty, uh, Wisconsin released new English Language Arts standards. So one of our first processes at the elementary and the intermediate, we're realigning our essential standards with the new English Language Arts standards. Um, we met by grade levels and discussed ins and outs. So for example, if you're a second grade teacher, you met with first grade to understand what were, what were they sending kids to second grade with? What was the expect, expectation as a second grade teacher? And we did that all the way along from pre-K, all the way up to grade five. Um, we worked with Teresa Stanley of CISA eleven out of Turtle Lake to help guide this process. We use professional resources such as Ed Reports, which is a, a website that has professionals that rank or rate ELA curriculum, so that was a, a great resource for us. We sought out professional development, visited um, different schools that were using the curriculums that we were considering. And then also one of our final steps was Teresa Stanley came here with us and guided our decision. Um, each teacher had a voice. We had very strong ELA leadership team that has done all of this work, reported back to their teams um, and shared team feedback with us. One of the things we did really consider were the four domains of the English Language Arts standards. You can see reading, writing, speaking and listening and language. So an ELA curriculum, pre-K through grade five is not, is not just reading. It's a very complex process and we really wanted to make sure that we were doing due diligence and really made the best choice and selection for our students and for our teachers. So we'll start with the pre-K ELA curriculum. Um, the curriculums that we looked at did not have a pre-K built-in curriculum, so this is a little bit different. Do you wanna share anything about the pre-K curriculums? Do you want to share anything about the pre-K curriculums?
Basically, we are, the 4K teachers are very focused on a play-based curriculum and a play-based learning environment. And so they are ordering two different pieces and parts that go to support what they already have. They presently have handwriting without tiers. Learning Without Tiers came out with a new product, focused a little bit more on the foundational skills. And so that is a piece of the curriculum that they wanted. And then the second one is creative curriculum. They're basically units that the teachers use already. They're just adding to the repertoire of units. They're expanding them again with a play, a play-based philosophy. The students direct their learning, their interests, and then the teacher tries to create that environment around their area of interest. So this just provides additional curriculums that they can use as resources.
So the K through grade five ELA curriculum, again, one of our last steps was essentially bringing Teresa Stanley in, really realigning our rubrics, and then making a decision on what we felt fit us best. We are proposing to purchase HMH Into Reading. It's a program that we felt really met our criteria, met the rubrics that we had laid out. It implements foundational skills, which is very, very important in establishing really great readers. We felt like K through five contained all the elements that we were really looking at for our students. There's a great balance of texts, as well as online components built in, some assessments, and we feel it'll be really conducive to the learning here of our students. The next slide is an estimated cost. So we do anticipate the final purchase amount maybe varying a little bit less from here. We've included teacher manuals for all teachers, including one for each grade level for multi-age classrooms. Cheryl and I have met with teachers at both buildings and have asked, so for example, if, if you're an AIM teacher, you'll throughout the day have students that are third, fourth, and fifth graders. And so conferencing with them, we really wanted to know, do you envision that you need a basal for three, four, and five? You're a little bit departmentalized when it comes to reading, do you envision having one? So there is possibly a little bit of flexibility in this price. And working with HMH, they have quoted us for the total that you see at the top there, which is $378,954.49. This is in eight-year quote, our curriculum cycles are every 10 years. So I did ask, tell me about years nine and years 10. They shared that as we get closer to that timeline of years nine and 10, that we would then start conversations with them. We would already have, obviously, the Cortex, the readers, they're called Rigby Readers. We would have those leveled readers, we'd have the basals, but we would need to purchase the consumables that we would use, as well as the online support components, which I'm being told we've done in the past.
Any idea what the cost is on that, Jessica?
I can get you breakdown exactly of, and I can ask for that. I can ask for what exactly what years nine and years 10 look like, given the consumables that we would need going through with section sizes.
I mean, I, obviously, you would anticipate it to be quite a bit less than
Absolutely, yeah.
what this is. Probably not even a third of the cost of this, right?
I, I wouldn't, I would agree, I wouldn't anticipate a third of the cost. A lot of the bulk is getting the materials that are really made to last for eight to 10 years. Like the Rigby Readers, each teacher will get 120 leveled text, you know, reader books and the basals. That years nine and 10 would really include that online access, and then the consumables we would need for those years.
And I think, is this your consumables on the next page? That, is this all for ELA?
No, we got this one in here.
Oh.
Or is that not?
This is in addition, so the consumables you see in front of us, the, the next sheet, those are different consumables. So those are consumables, you know, like Montessori inset paper, you'll see. Those are down a little bit halfway through McGraw-Hill, those are title decoding books that are used. Scholastic News supports our social studies and, and science, and then Zainer Blazer's are handwriting curriculum. So these are consumables that HMH does not offer, or does not support other learning. They offer, they support other subject areas.
This is probably a dumb question, and I apologize, I would have asked it, I think, had I done a meeting, and I apologize that I couldn't come that day. This curriculum fitting in with moving to the, like, the title, school, like, school-wide title services? How does this curriculum fit in with that goal? Obviously, it's fitting well in, fitting that objective, is that, is that, was that part of that? Is there any discussion in this, or how did that kind of shake out?
No, transitioning to school-wide and adopting this at, at the same time, I think is a great benefit in that we're, we are shifting our practices. We know that going school-wide, it provides a lot more flexibility. We're talking with teachers and title teams, for example, we're looking at that incoming second grade class into third, which is why we've added another section of third grade. And so it really is a great time to be able to look at this resource, train our title teachers in using HMH, because if we're gonna push title teachers in rather than doing some pull-out, they can go through the professional development with us. This quote includes books for them, so if students are pulling out, their, that title teacher is able to see that scope and sequence as well. It really will just lend itself well. In terms of the program-supporting title, it has some tier-two interventions that are available. It provides online access to all teachers across the board, so title teachers can pull and see what a student is doing within their classroom online at that time, or what assignments have been pushed out, or what are their grades that they're getting.
Okay, great, so that'd be all encompassing through the title teachers to have access to this and training as well.
Title teachers, I envision, will still use a lot of their tier-two and tier-three resources. But it's, it's another layer for them, maybe with some of those, you know, low-tier-two students, that they want to be able to support. And again, pushing in for them to have this knowledge base and have this access really will move us forward as a school-wide program.
Well, I know you've done a lot of research and a lot of work on this, so I'm glad you've made a decision.
Us too.
Do I have a motion to accept the? Quick.
Uh, I was just gonna see if I could ask some questions to them.
Oh, yep, go ahead.
Um, why now? Why are we changing the curriculum from what it currently is to now?
Can you say that? Sure. So we have a curriculum cycle, it's every 10 years, so every subject area is on the cycle. And so our current journeys, which is Hope Mifflin also, is 10 years old, or more than 10 years old. And so we're just updating it, a lot of new research has come out, the foundations of reading, the essential, the Wisconsin essential, the, the standards, sorry about that. So it's just, you know, it's like, we're driving an old car right now, and sometimes an old car is okay, but when you're educating kids, we need the, we need the Cadillac. And honestly, Joe, our reading scores over the past years have not been what we would like them to be. And with COVID, we just finished, we just finished assessing our children, and there's a, a big impact that we are experiencing from COVID. And so we're very hopeful that with this new program and with additional professional development, that all of our teachers will be receiving, that we can implement this with fidelity and do a great job, and hopefully make, meet the needs of all our kids.
So it's a 10-year cycle, I thought it was 11.
10 or 11? I don't know what.
It was 12, no, I think, I think we combined some, so I believe it's 10.
Okay, if it was 11, I mean, I just did the numbers, but if we were just to keep the same numbers, it would be just over half a million dollars for a curriculum for that period of time, for 11. $521,000. If you were just to divide it by eight, right? It's an eight-year curriculum, this? Multiply it by 11, that's 521.
I think one of Shar's questions was looking at years nine and 10. I guess upfront, it's, it's more because you're purchasing all those basals, you know? So the, the basal that a teacher gets in year one will last them 10 years, so you won't need to repurchase those basals. Or the Rigby Readers, which are the 120 student texts, you'll get those, and they will last. I mean, we, we, we still have them in our classrooms. So really, it's the upfront initial cost. The, the years nine and 10, again, it would really be those consumables, so those are the student workbooks, ones are writing notebook, ones are a grammar workbook. Those will be your accumulating cost in year nine and 10. So if you're just straight dividing it by 10, that's not an accurate number of per year, because nine and 10 would be less.
The cost, yeah, years nine and 10 yearly cost would be less than
Year one.
the 379 divided by eight years.
That's what I just.
Basically, yeah, so. I see where you're going, though, if you divide the 379 by eight, and if you times that by 11 or 10, whatever.
It was 11, yeah.
You'd get, you know, 10-year, 11-year cost. But I think the point would be, it would be a little less than that, because years nine and 10 wouldn't be as expensive as 379 divided by eight would be the theory, or the plan, that's the plan, right?
Yeah, and I, I can definitely get updated quotes for consumables. We have a, a full quote, actually, in front of me, I have a full quote, it's six pages, it's broken down by grade level, by student. We have section sizes, we have teacher sizes, and what each consumable costs, like, you know, $70 for this consumable, or for eight years. So I mean, it is broken down by year, so I can ask for exactly years nine and 10. They only, HMH will only give you an eight-year quote upfront.
I see, they may not have the cost for years nine and 10, because of, they could lock in that far off.
Yeah.
Um, we're, we're paying for this curriculum out of the 1.9 million dollar recurrent.
That's a piece of it, and then there's a line item that's separate from that. Well, go ahead, Andy.
No, I just said a piece of it, yeah.
Yes, a piece of it is from the 1.9, 2017, and a piece of it's a line item that was well prior to the 2017.
And how much is coming from the 1.9?
Uh, it was 150 of the, from 2017.
Can I ask a, a question on budget of this? How, how does rubber meet the road? How does, how do our teachers get trained? Like, are there people coming here, are they going to get trained? Or how does this look for our teachers educating our kids?
That's been a big component of, of us researching this, and, and really about negotiations. We really want to implement this with fidelity. We have done a lot of work, we realize it's a lot of money, and we really want it to produce great results. So they offer different avenues of professional development. We are negotiating, this quote includes 38, no, 32 virtual coaching sessions, those are by grade level and by topic. It also includes a two-hour getting started professional development. Along with that, we've, have resourced out with CISA, that one of their reading specialists, or educational consultant, actually, we have her slated to come here and do some in-service training. So those will actually start, we're anticipating in August, we'll have one in, have one in July, have one in August, and then they're built through in. As a director of curriculum, I think it's really important that professional development be ongoing. When we get to year two or year three, we're not done learning. We need to still know how to use these resources effectively to drive current student needs.
Cheryl, I appreciate you telling me that, again, we want to strive for our mission is excellence. And there's, there's ways to get there, you know, ways for improvement. And again, we can't be doing the same thing and expecting a different result, so.
The cycle is 11 years, I queued it up, I'm not sure if you were able to get there. No, 11 years, uh, so we just did last year, 612, we did Language Arts. This year is 4K5, and then Science at the High School, Science K, and Social Studies, Social Studies, Math, Math, Applied Arts, Applied Arts. That brings us out to 2030, 31. So that's the next 10 years, if you will.
Cheryl, you brought the AGR Performance Report to us every year, twice a year, where we were looking at reading scores surpassing those goals that you'd set, and math was always lagging behind. In the last few, well, the year before COVID hit, so 2019, we started to see those math scores come up. Our reading scores start to suffer a little bit more. And I, you know, the, the practical brain in me wants to say that we put more emphasis on math in that time to bring those scores up, and maybe our reading suffered a little bit. Part of me wants to hopefully say that the curriculum was lagging behind, and that the new standards coming out didn't help an old curriculum, so didn't support, the old curriculum didn't support the new standards. Do we anticipate seeing, having this particular program, this particular curriculum? Do we see that helping our AGR Performance Report, helping to meet those standards at the same time not letting our math slip back? Do we see that as being an easier task with this curriculum?
I, I don't think there's gonna be anything easy about implementing this curriculum. I think we are going to have to really focus on the professional development. It's gonna be a huge learning curve for our teachers, in addition to the fact that, you know, the research is right. COVID put our kids behind, and I was not wanting to believe that until I got our test scores, our spring test scores at Leon. And they are lower than they've ever been, and it is because of the hit that we, you know, kids being taught remotely, kids not being taught, not, parents not, you know, being able to provide the support, intermittent education. And I, I don't want to sound like I'm making excuses, I don't believe I am, I really believe there's a big impact. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, but, but there's a great plan for it. Jess has gotten on it, she's talked with Teresa Stanley, who has been with us through this whole process. We respect her, the teachers respect her, I believe she will definitely provide the guidance that we need as we move forward in implementation. The other piece is, as you are aware, our district is really strong in professional learning communities. Our teachers know how to work together now, it's amazing, they've always worked together, but now we have time for them to work together. And so I see great things happening, but I see a lot of work and commitment on the part of administration and teachers alike.
I think that really speaks to our, our mission statement of lifelong, promoting lifelong learning. And that doesn't mean just for the kids that we're educating, I think our educators themselves, our teachers, take that to heart themselves. They're constantly seeking professional development and higher degrees. And I, I have nothing but the utmost confidence that our teachers are gonna dig in and accept this curriculum as, if, if that's what we choose to do and learn how to do that. I would, I would bet that our teachers will surpass our goals of, and our expectations of getting this implemented to our kids in a, in a great manner. I think COVID, you know, structure was a huge thing that we saw kids lose. And I think having this, as much of a normal year as we could have this year, really helped get the structure back. It takes a long time to get those kids restructured.
Absolutely. And I'm not saying that we, that we are performing low, because what I'm seeing is there's been a lot of growth this year, but it definitely impacted our students and their learning.
And remember about learning loss, and Tom can help me with this, the learning loss at the elementary and intermediate was in the area of English Language Arts, because it's a direct instruction piece. The learning loss at middle and high school was math, because that's a direct instructional piece that they missed at both of those levels. Do I have that correct, Tom?
Yeah, correct, and I think it was, I think it was around statewide, eight to 12 to 15% drop, depending on the subject level and the grade level. And the biggest drops, obviously, were coming from families that maybe didn't have the structure at home for the online learning or the technology needs, they suffered more, which is unfortunate.
Hard, I mean, parents had to keep working and affording to put food on the table and, and extra food, because kids were home. And that was, that's just honestly the stark reality, and especially the living in where we live, in not an affluent community where everybody has the luxury of having a, a standard.
Right, and it was a two-year, we, we had a two-year gap then, because we didn't have a test the year that they sent everyone home, and then we had kind of a really weird year. So then, you know, it was, it was a two-year gap between the last time they tested to look at those differences, too. I, we were all expecting a, a drop, I don't think we were expecting it to be that high. We were lucky in AIM, our drops were significantly lower than others, though, like half of what the state dropped, but still, it was a problem.
Jessica, what other curriculums did you look at? One of the ones I was, someone had talked to me about was the Science of Reading.
So Science of Reading is an approach or theory to, to reading. Many curriculums are aligned to Science of Reading. ARC, which stands for American Reading Company, is one that we were also looking at. Science of Reading is, really isn't anything new, it's kind of a coined term, but it really speaks to the foundational skills. So that's phonological, phonemic awareness, decoding, encoding. Those are skills that really should be in any, any reading program, whether it's balanced literacy or Science of Reading. So American Reading Company is one we were also considering. HMH does align with the Science of Reading, there are many foundational skills in there as well.
And the ARC program was more expensive, is that correct?
It was significantly more expensive, to be very honest, significantly more.
But that's not why we didn't go with it.
No, I, I guess, you know, even if our job is, you know, is.
The alignment.
Yes, and we actually looked at five curriculums from the start through this whole process. We looked at Witten Wisdom, we looked at CKLA, we looked at
Into Reading.
Into Reading, ARC, and what is the fifth one?
Wonders, did you say wonders?
It wasn't wonders. Anyway, we, we did start with five. We started with four, Hope Mifflin wasn't even one of the four. Holt Mifflin wasn't even one of the four. And then we had presentations and we eliminated them, and then we brought Holt Mifflin on. And so, it was quite a process, and the, the teachers were very vested.
One of the big benefits I see of the process that we did is teachers were very invested. They're experts in what they do. Shar, as you mentioned, they are always seeking out knowledge and growing as learners. They truly want to do their best. They love what they do. Teaching reading is a, is, it, it takes an expert, really, it does. There's scaffolding, there's scoping and sequence. It is really purposeful in teaching a child how to read. And it, it starts in pre-K and travels all the way up, all the way up until middle school, really, and maybe even beyond that. But all these teachers having a voice, you know, we had a leadership team, but we also brought teachers together often. They viewed the ed reports with us, they visited schools with us. So, so now that we've made a decision, they really have, they're very invested in it. I've had a couple of teachers say, when do we get it? And I said, oh, wait, slow down, we have, we have some work to do. Because what's important to us is once it's in your hands, we need you to know how to use it. We really want to train you on how to use it effectively. That's really important to us.
Is this continuing or aligning with the standards-based curriculum or grading system and everything?
It will, it will align with our essential standards. In working with our educational consultant from CISA, she's working with a couple of districts right now that are implementing new curriculums. HMH does align with, with essential standards, with Wisconsin-based essential standards. And so, our work will be to realign our essential standards. We don't really envision them changing. It will be probably just more on how we are assessing our essential standards.
One of the things I did when I, when I was looking into this was I looked at Florida's change also, in that they got a group of experts together because they didn't like the curriculum and, and through politics did it, I guess. But it's an extremely long curriculum and with no data at this point, I guess. So, I was just wondering, what is your, what is the data for Holt and Mifflin of, of schools using it? What were their grade changes or however you, you get your data, that this is the best curriculum to choose?
So, as I shared, we looked at ed reports, which is a group of professionals that, that critique all curriculums. There's certain green lights that they have to make to even continue on. That was one of our foundations is we weren't really looking at anything that wasn't, that wasn't green. That was kind of our saying, it had to be all green or else we really weren't interested in piecemealing something together.
I don't know what you mean by green lights.
Um, so, they had different strands. So, for example, they would look at fluency, and these experts would evaluate the curriculum, have conversations with educators, look at data, look at scores. And if it met their criteria of meeting the minimum or the maximum of, of what their expectation was, then they were given green lights or yellow lights or red lights. So, it was just a scoring system to, to guide them. Intereading is, I mean, Holt and Mifflin is a well-established older company. I mean, they, they've been around for a long time. What we currently use is Journeys, which is their older version. This is much more updated. I can tell you that in talking with other administrators or directors, there are several districts, districts using HMH. This, like, for example, Unity is in, in year one. They've been someone that I've reached out to. I actually drove there and picked up curriculum books from them so teachers could have samples in their hands. There's a couple of other districts around here that are also adopting HMH with an implementation date of next year.
Do we have a motion?
You would need one.
Yep, we need one.
I couldn't remember if there was one on the table.
Nope.
All right. Well, I make a motion that we approve the English Language Art Curriculum Recommendation and the consumables.
Both.
Second.
And the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both. There we go. Onto our East-West Service Road.
Okay, Andy's going to help me with this one. We have a fund called Fund Forty-Six. You established it as a board five years ago in the fall of twenty sixteen. You need to leave the money there, whatever you put there, for five years. Can't do anything with it. Using your capital improvement plan, which is our feasibility study, you then can use the money. So, that money became available in the fall of twenty-one. We're past that now here into the May of twenty twenty-two. There's a hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents there. The proposal, as you'll see in the white box where it says one item, is to resurface the East-West Service Road, which in essence it means from Minneapolis to the intersection by the middle and intermediate schools. And the bid is for depulverizing the existing asphalt and add more crown to the roadway, find grade existing base coarse and compact, pave with hot mix asphalt to an average compacted temperature of three inches, and no striping included for crosswalk, stop bars, or handicap stalls. We would need to do that independently if we wanted to. The cost is eighty thousand, which would then leave us just shy of a hundred thousand remaining. It can be there however long we want it to be there and use it whenever we want to use it. So, Monarch is the bidder. There is no competition for doing paving work here in this part of the state. That's going to bid in in opposition to Monarch. They're five minutes down the road, and anyone that would come here, they would be using Monarch's product anyway. So, this is cutting right to the chase, so to speak. If you've driven the East-West Service Road, I think it speaks for itself. We've got some issues. We would need a motion to approve if that's what you want to do.
It keeps fifteen miles an hour there.
Yeah, fifteen doesn't matter.
I don't know who got this bid, but I, I, we got to pay eighty grand, and there's no striping here, for God's sakes. Not at all. I think they should throw that in.
Couple gallons.
And just to extend on that a little bit, it's, this is the first step in a part of our proven plan, using some of our referendum funds to improve that safety of coming in and out of the parking lot down there as well.
I was going to say, so will this tie, I mean, we need this to tie into the high school, obviously, when that part is, that's part of the referendum dollars, correct?
Yes, and so is the intermediate school.
Yeah.
And, and Monarch would likely do that work as well. And we're going to do the intermediate school parking lot while they're here in June through referendum dollars.
But these dollars are not for the referendum.
These are not.
These are the forty-six.
These are not.
This is Fund Forty-Six. You established.
Right, right.
And not that I, I don't applaud the, the, the low-cost way we're directing traffic right now down there, but we need something a little more permanent for that, so. But yeah, definitely, this is what, like I said, if you, if you remember back a little background, we had opened this five hundred dollars back way back, we were on, and then we added to it a few years later, like probably my first year I was here, and to the balance we're at now, so. That's, uh, this was already in the plan to use, you had to submit to DPI when it was open. Very general plan, but it was one of them, so.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-two, or, uh, move, well, goodness sakes. I move to use the Fund Forty-Six dollars for the repaving of the East-West Service Road.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Dale? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both, no? There we go. Next, we will have the open enrollment.
So, the open enrollment window in the state of Wisconsin's the month of, of February, and you need to make a motion to approve the open enrollees in. And then the rest of the year is the alternative window for open enrollment. That's a whole different process. So, in this particular case, the open enrollments in are on the left, the green. We have twenty-one seeking to come in. You see their grades in their resident districts. And then the open enrollments out are in red, and you'll see their destinations and grades as well. This is the first in a long time where we've had more in than out during this window, which is a very good trend, so.
Look at how many of them are pre-K.
Yeah, I was going to say.
What's with pre-K?
I'm, I can't, I don't know because we'd have to ask them to know, but I can say that I'm very happy that they're younger grade levels because once they're here at the beginning, perhaps you have them for twelve years.
Yep.
So, this is a good thing.
That's great.
And I mean, we've, we've hoped that Clubhouse would.
I, I, I have to believe that that's part of it, but I can't say that with certainty. I have to know the names to do that.
Right.
Yep. If you want me to check into that, I can check the names and figure out if that's the case.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
All we'd have to do is gather the names, and Nina would know who they are instantly. I imagine, and if she doesn't know them, it's not a Clubhouse kid.
Right. Right, yeah, I would like to know that.
Okay, we will find that out.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the open enrollment.
Erin, is there a second?
I second.
Shar beat you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both, no? Okay. All right. And COVID.
COVID nineteen safe return to plan. We have updated numbers from when we met last for the last couple of weeks. In the week of April thirtieth to the sixth, we had fourteen cases. Two were staffed, twelve were kids. In that subsequent week, the seventh to the thirteenth, we had five total kids. And the week of, this, that'd be this week, we, we are too early in the window to articulate any results. Are we in a different position now than we were in the last two years? I would say with certainty we are. Unless you tell me otherwise, I'm not going to. I'm not going to bring this back to you in June.
I was going to say.
I motion that.
Well, there's no motion needed, but that's great. Point taken. Yep. There's a, I, I don't see cause to bring it back. If there's a new thing that happens along, then we'll deal with it.
So, are you still going to continue tracking them?
I don't see why we would track them if we're not going to do anything with them.
That's what I'd like.
We would need, I mean, internally, if someone has COVID and they want to know what to do, they're going to contact Rose and say, what are the steps and so forth and so on to be a safe employee. But from attracting and contacting the whole nine yards, I'm not sure we need to do that. Unless you tell me otherwise.
Reiterate, this is something that we had to revisit at least twice a year.
You have to revisit it every six months, so I'll have to bring it back in six months. So, I can't say you'll never see it again.
And was that the nurse or somebody or who?
Rose is the nurse. Rose Keppker in the district. This item is a DPI, SER-connected item. You have to bring this back every six months. So, it's May, you'll see it again in November.
Until DPI tells us we don't have to.
Until DPI tells us we don't have to.
And the, and the board chose to redo this or review this every month just so that we can keep track of substitutes.
You didn't, you didn't have to, but we did.
We chose to do that, so. But hell, we are hopefully stopped.
Hopefully.
There we go. Next up, we'll have our donations.
Okay, we have one donation. Southern Glazier's Wine and Spirits. Thanks to Julie Bierkamp for coordinating the donation of several reams of paper and card stock to the intermediate school. We'll put those to good use. I have to admit, when Becky sent the board book to me and I saw Southern Glazier's Wine and Spirits, I did pause.
Donuts and wine.
What's going on?
You know, I don't know.
Then I read further. It was not product, but rather paper, so. All right, there you go. So, we need a motion to accept that.
We accept the donation to the district with many thanks.
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Shar. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Both, and thank you very much. It's always interesting. We get lots of stuff here. Next, we'll have personnel.
Okay, new employment in athletic contracts for Lori Becker, third grade, Christine Erickson, kindergarten, Randy Gauz, high school math, Darla Hughes, four K teacher, Megan Jensen, intermediate school para, Dylan Johnson, high school social studies teacher, Taylor Creft, kindergarten teacher, Stacy Mattson, first grade teacher, and Kylie, oh, Kylie Olson, dance team, Nathan White, intermediate school special ed, and Brianna Wondrell for seventh grade volleyball. You might be wondering why so many? The month of May, you're always going to have movement. Reassignments, Maggie Burr from first grade to Project Base, Jennifer Kennedy, out of Project Base into Children's House Montessori, Grant Miller from kindergarten into the lower elementary Montessori teacher position, and resignations from Riley Johnson, Clubhouse Assistant Teacher, and Ashley Larson, Special Education Teacher at the intermediate, Zach Severson, High School Social Studies, and Denise Vaughn, Clubhouse Assistant Teacher. And actually, one more on the list. Randy, Randy Gauz with a resignation.
Yep, that's our numbers.
Um, correction on Grant and, um, Grant and Jennifer. Jennifer is going to lower elementary. Grant is going to children's house.
So, you would need a motion to accept those if that's what you want to do?
So moved.
Try move, there you go. And second.
Second.
Shar. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both, no?
Just for the record, I did not vote.
Yep.
Yes, remaining. And then, lower elementary means first and second and third.
First, second, and third.
First, second, and third, and the children's house is the four KK.
Four KK.
Yeah, wow, I could have chimed it sooner, but you got it.
I haven't done the math on any of this, and I haven't done any checking into how many board members have come before. I haven't done any math on the number of kids that have come before, but Cheryl's been here for thirty-nine years. And this is her last board meeting unless she chooses to come back and was a participant in the audience, which I don't know that will occur. So, I'm not sure if Cheryl wanted to share something, but if you do, this is the time to do that.
I do.
I'll turn it over to you.
I do. And you have to listen to me. But I timed it, it's not that long, but I didn't have to raise.
We've heard this before, Cheryl.
I don't want to forget anything. So, so bear with me. In nineteen eighty-three, my husband Gene and I moved to Amory after spending one year teaching in Stanley Point, Wisconsin. Amory wasn't foreign to me as this was the home of my grandmother, Margaret Fall. At that time, we felt Amory was a nice, quaint little town. However, in our mind, it was a place we would stay for just a couple of years and then move on. I was from the city, Gene was from the, the, from Fall Creek, and I wasn't sure a small town was for me. To this day, I still hear Mr. Ray Norstad, the superintendent that I love and adore because he hired me, say, you know, Cheryl, Amory is a place you move to thinking you will stay for a couple of years, and before you know it, it becomes your home. Well, Mr. Norstad was right. Here I am forty years later, retiring from the school district of Amory. So, during my career, I taught third and fourth grade, served as the director of curriculum and instruction, and edited my career as the elementary principal of thirty years. There are so many things worth mentioning about my professional journey that have captured my heartbeat and will serve as memories forever. So, these are those things. First and foremost, the precious children of our community that touch my life each and every day through their beautiful smiles, their honesty and innocence, and in many situations, their quiet resilience. Our parents, our volunteers, especially the Parents as Partners Committee. That, that committee I started my first year as a principal and has been with me the entire tenure of my career. They have dedicated time and effort throughout the years supporting not only the, the students, but our staff. The opportunity to work with amazingly dedicated and committed group of people at Leon Elementary School, including teachers, paraeducators, custodians, cooks, and secretaries, everybody there. When I made my announcement to retire, I wanted everybody there because everybody at that building is important to me. They work tirelessly to focus on the right work even during the most difficult of circumstances, i.e. COVID, but trusted and respected leadership to make decisions on what is best for students and families. And to that, I am so appreciative. For the elementary staff, their support and respect for one another as innovative programs and changes took place within our school environment, including our district schools of PBIS, trauma-sensitive schools, professional learning communities, in addition to the Montessori program and the project-based learning environments. They're always there to support one another, and I'm so proud of them for that. I am thankful to have had the privilege to work with an administrative team and a district team that believes in hard work, demonstrates compassion and support toward one another, models dedication to their profession, and will commit to whatever it takes to support strong, strong schools and community for the benefit of our students, even though Tom makes fun of me every time we have an administrative team meeting. I don't know who he's going to pick on. And last but not least, for the members of the, the School Board of Education throughout my tenure that demonstrated a passion for public education, believed in the democratic process, donated time and energy to this important work and position. I thank you for doing that, and I thank all the board members before you for doing that. It has been a true pleasure to have the trust of this community and the School Board of Education to serve our children. I take with me wonderful, wonderful memories of full heart and a deep appreciation for the opportunity to serve in this capacity as the elementary school principal. It was a very, and still is, bitter. school principal. It was a very, and still is, bittersweet decision to retire. However, I leave you with one of my very favorite quotes written by Dr. Theodore Seuss, aka Dr. Seuss. "Don't cry because it's over, Cheryl. Smile because it happened." So, thank you.
Are you going to tell her about the clause?
The 15-year contract?
No, 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 the bus driver clause.
I agree to that, because there was a reading initiative at the elementary, and one of my kids walked past the school bus that was on the wall, and Cheryl was in the driver's seat. And he said, is that Mrs. Meyer driving the bus? I said, yes, it is. And he paused, and he said, and all he said to me was, I don't think that's a good idea.
Thank you so much for the dedication and the years. It's been, you've seen a lot of stuff.
I have. Good, bad, indifferent, but I would do it all over again.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Save your remarks till Wednesday, Tom.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, I'll say, I don't, I can't be here Wednesday night because I'm at a conference, but I'll just say that for the last four-plus years that I've known you, that, and everyone there down through their career and retiring, hope that they've made a difference. And I can honestly see that, and people I've talked to, that you've made a difference. So I think that's a thing to remember, lasting. You're welcome.
Do we need to go into close again?
No.
Anybody? Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aaron, second.
Second.
Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.